The House will come to order. Calendar for the day, the first bill on the calendar for the day is House File 132. The Clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 132, number two on the calendar for the day, an act relating to state government, the First Engrossment.
I recognize the author of the bill. Who will explain the bill? The member from Hennepin, Representative Noor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I want to start by thanking the leadership of our Majority Leader, Winkler, Chair Mahoney, Chair Davney, Representative Ha, Gomez, Dean, Lee, and Hassan, who really put a lot of efforts and time to put together this package, the Promise Act. I also want to thank the staff for putting together this package and for doing an amazing job. The Promise Act offers a multi-pronged approach to rebuild the areas impacted by the civil unrest. This package reflects our deepest values and commitments. This is a comprehensive economic recovery package. Members, we don't condone the violence and the damage and the destruction that caused the civil unrest after the death of George Floyd, but we must not ignore the despair and hopelessness that gives rise to this kind of event. On the same streets, I saw how high humanity can rise. Volunteers from across different cities, across different backgrounds, from all walks of lives, showed up with brooms, ready to clean up every single day. This is what I call a labor of love. This is what I call community. The buildings and businesses were destroyed, but you could feel it. It's not the spirit, not the spirit of the people who were impacted. Members, the building across from me was totally destroyed. And it's about two blocks from the fire station. Members, as a state and city, we failed to act at the moment that our communities need help. Yes, our communities will rebuild, not just to make the way they were, but to make things better in a shape that will bring back our cities to better. Our communities will rise again. Where we go from here really depends on what we do. I really appreciate all of you for taking the time to visit the areas impacted by the civil unrest. Indeed, the size, scope, and vastness of the damage posed the most significant challenge for our state that has faced so far in a civil unrest. Yet, we have to respond as equal to rebuild our cities, our communities, and our economy, to rebuild the lives and the livelihoods of our communities that have been impacted by the civil unrest. Madam Speaker and members, Article One in this bill defines the Promise Act, providing resources, opportunity, and maximizing investment in striving entrepreneurs. Article Two in this bill, that I'm the author for this section, establishes a community repair panel to consider claims and damages and harm resulting from the civil unrest that occurred in our cities in Minneapolis and St. Paul, working with and in communities that have been impacted. The panel will be appointed by the governor and is empowered to consider claims and issue awards to eligible persons to cover damages that were not otherwise covered by applicable insurance policies. Article Three in this bill, which was authored by Chair Mahoney and Chair Davney, creates an immediate financial assistance program through deed to assist areas affected by the recent civil unrest. It preserves existing entities and encourages new economic development in these areas through locally designed programs focused on providing grants and forgivable loans to businesses and nonprofit. It also sets the baseline terms for this assistance while preserving significant flexibility for responding to local needs and requires monitoring of the performance. This section of the bill provides, set aside or caps out, $17.5 million to the city of St. Paul and Minneapolis. This section of the bill appropriates $167.57 million appropriation. Article Four in this bill, which was authored by Representatives Ha and Lee, creates the Metropolitan Area Redevelopment Corporation, or otherwise known as MARC, as a political subdivision of the state to develop short-term and long-term redevelopment for the areas impacted by the civil unrest. It provides nonprofit organizations and communities impacted by the unrest, particularly the people of color indigenous, that are engaged in rebuilding the areas damaged by the civil unrest, to aid in redevelopment of the areas that we have all seen after the death of George Floyd. It also provides for ourselves a use tax to fund the corporation and grants made through this tax, through the redevelopment corporation that was created. Madam Speaker and members, it's expected to generate up to $60 million a year under this article. Article Five in this bill was developed by Representative Dean that requires the Department of Commerce to assist in the public in resolving insurance claims related to the civil unrest and insurers timely, timely, timely resolving any issues that result from denial for the insurance package. This includes property, casualty, casualty and liability claims, and also requires the insurers to submit information to the Department of Commerce. Article Six in this bill was developed by Representative Hassan that caps the rent or stabilizes the rent for both commercial and residential properties that are eligible for or who receive state funding related to the damage and fire during the civil unrest in May and June of 2020. It limits the rent for those properties to the average of the rent in the first quarter of 2020, or to the last annual rent payment if rent is paid annually. It also provides residential tenants with enforcement provisions if this section is violated using existing tenant remedies provisions. The rent restrictions affect new and renewed leases after July 1, 2020, and goes on until April 1, 2024. Property owners can also increase the rent annually during that period based on inflation. Article Seven in this bill, that was written by and authored by Representative Gomez, allows Minneapolis and St. Paul to acquire by eminent domain property in specified areas and then resells the property to private parties subject to the redevelopment agreement that supports the ability of the businesses and uses directly, and uses directly to support those who are affected by civil unrest. Article Eight, similarly, was written and authored by Representative Gomez, provides sales tax exceptions and property tax relief for properties and businesses damaged or destroyed during the unrest in the cities included in the peacetime emergency declared in the Governor's Executive Order 2064. It provides this relief in two ways, through a sales tax abatement for rebuilding and recovery costs, as well as immediate property tax relief for destroyed or damaged properties. Members, this is what we need to do. This is what the community is asking for during this difficult time. We have always responded, when we have disasters anywhere in the state, this is a moment that we need to invest in communities, especially businesses who are owned by people of color indigenous, who have spent their own savings for a long time to develop those businesses. For some, we've heard when they say for more than 20 or 30 years, they spent their lifetime saving to build those businesses. We should never walk away from our communities at this time of need. Members, I ask for your support for this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There is an amendment at the desk. The Clerk will report the amendment.
Scott moves to amend House File Number 132, the First Engrossment. The amendment is coded A8.
I recognize the author of the amendment, the member from Anoka, Representative Scott, to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And this amendment, let me explain a little bit about what the current bill does and does not do. Currently, the bill provides that all data related to a claim are private or non-public except for the name of the eligible person and the amount awarded to the eligible person. And the bill also shields data created by the panel from discovery in lawsuits and administrative proceedings unless the data may be evidence of a crime. And the current bill also states that the panel is not subject to the open meeting law. So panel deliberations about amounts awarded would not have to occur in public. And I don't know of other entities that get $125 million of state funds that don't have a level of transparency at all about how those dollars are spent. And so this amendment addresses each of those issues and would make the panel subject to the open meeting law. And just for members' information, private information like financials and trade secrets, those sorts of things are already covered by Chapter 13. Those are protected and those are not considered public. But the other information would become public in this amendment. And, you know, one of the things we do on a regular basis in the legislature is the legislative auditor looks at different entities like this. And I don't want us to be down the road a couple of years, have the legislative auditor dig into this and find out there are all kinds of problems because there wasn't transparency and openness in how this money is spent. Taxpayer dollars from taxpayers of the state of Minnesota. And I would love it if Representative Noor would see this as a friendly amendment. If he does, I would not ask for a roll call, but if this is not taken as a friendly amendment, I would request a roll call. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
A roll call has been requested. Are there 15 hands? Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Noor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Representative Scott. I think the intent of the amendment is good, but let's put the focus. This is not the first time that we've established a similar program. This program is modeled from when we had 35W Bridge collapse. It's the same process that we're using here. Quite frankly, this is even more impactful because people are going to be sharing their business information, their trade secrets, things that are not going to become normal in a public setting. This has also provided protection under the Chapter 13. So this is not a way of, this is not a way of bringing a change to that process by saying we need to have that open meeting law under this provision. The entity or the community repair panel is going to be working in and with the communities that have been impacted. They'll be scrutinized, they'll be held accountable, but what I'm saying is, this is not a good amendment to change the setting because of the impact and the harm that was done to those communities. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Further discussion to the amendment.
Madam Speaker.
Representative Scott, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Didn't know how to get your attention and recognize you any other way than just to speak up. Representative Noor, just again, I want to reiterate that trade secrets and financials are not made public. That is already protected under Chapter 13. So, and to compare the funds here to what happened in 35W, I don't think is an apples-to-apples comparison. And so, folks, I would urge a green, a green vote on this amendment for transparency purposes. Thank you.
Further discussion to the amendment. Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Representative Scott, I understand your sincere dedication to these causes and make sure that we have as much transparency as possible. This really is modeled exactly on the 35W Bridge Fund. And what made that model work so successfully was that the special masters in that case were able to gather data, hear directly from people, look at the total amount of claims, deliberate, decide how much each claim was worth, and then figure out how to allocate the total pool of funds available on an equitable basis. And so, it's very difficult for any group of people in a panel situation like this. It's almost like asking a judge in chambers to record and reveal what they're saying. This is something that requires confidential deliberation. And, members, it worked extremely well last time. I think it will work extremely well this time if we stick to the existing data classification.
Any further discussion to the amendment? Hearing no further discussion, the Clerk will take the role on the amendment.
Acem.
Acem, no.
Acem, no. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, no.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, no. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, vote yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, no.
Carlson, aye, no. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, no.
Carlson, l, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin. Claflin. Considine.
Considine, pass.
Considine, pass. Daniels.
Daniels, yes.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Doubt. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Davney. Davney, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins. Elkins. Erickson. Erickson. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, yes.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez, no. Green.
Green, yes.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Gunther. Gunther. Haley.
Haley, yes.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr. Herr, no. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Juergens.
Juergens, yes.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, no.
Katiza Whittoon, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, no.
Kunish Paudine, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, no. Lesh.
Lesh, no.
Lesh, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listlegard. Listlegard, no. Long. Long, no. Lucero. Lucero. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney. Mahoney, no. Mann.
No.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markward. Markward, no. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mohler.
Mohler, no.
Mohler, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash, excused. Nelson, m.
Nelson, m, aye.
Nelson, m, aye. Nelson, n.
Nelson, n, aye.
Nelson, n, aye. New. New, aye. Noor. Noor, no. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, no. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor. Pryor. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell.
Sandell, no. Sansstead.
Sandell, no.
Sansstead.
Sansstead, aye.
Sansstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Sundin, no.
Sundin, no. Swazinski.
Swazinski, yes.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, no.
Tabke, no. Tice.
Just wait, I got a vote.
Tice. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdahl.
Erdahl, aye.
Erdahl, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, no.
Wagenius, no. Waslowick.
Waslowick, no.
Waslowick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, no. Walgamot.
Walgamot, no.
Walgamot, no. Zhong Jie.
Zhong Jie, no.
Zhong Jie, no. Zhong T.
Zhong T, no.
Zhong T, no. Yuwakim.
Yuwakim, no.
Yuwakim, no. Speaker Hartman. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Doubt. Doubt. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Erickson. Erickson, no. Gunther.
Gunther, no.
Gunther, no. Grunhagen. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye. Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Lucero.
Yes.
Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Pryor. Pryor. Tice.
Tice, for tye.
Tice, for tye.
Tice, for tye.
Listlegard. Listlegard changes from no to aye. Erickson. Erickson changes from no to aye. Erickson changes from no to aye.
There being sixty-one ayes and sixty-eight noes, the motion does not prevail. The amendment is not adopted. There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Gomez moves to amend House File Number 132, the first engrossment, as follows. The amendment is coded A-20-0811.
I call upon the author of the amendment, the member from Hennepin, Representative Gomez, to explain the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, this amendment adds an extra article to House File 132 and establishes the Civil Unrest Investigatory Commission. So, I represent the South Minneapolis District where George Floyd was murdered and the- a district that was heavily damaged as a result of the civil unrest that we're talking about today. I want to thank all of the members of this body who have expressed their concern and compassion, who came to our neighborhood, who talked to small business owners. It was especially impactful to have the leadership from the other side in this chamber be there on the first day that we had a tour with some of our colleagues. And we really just appreciate their presence and- and the care and compassion shown to the people in my neighborhood who are- have been through such a- such a difficult time. Those of you who made it spoke with- with business owners and one of the most difficult things was, you know, speaking to these business owners and having them talk about how they called 911 over and over again, that they tried to engage, tried to get the help that they needed, that they- and that they felt abandoned by their city and ultimately abandoned by their state, once the state was mobilized to get involved. And of course, you know, I think as representatives of government, none of us take that lightly when people who we're here to work for express to us how very let down and abandoned they felt by our response. So, I personally had a really, you know, my- my- the neighborhood that I grew up in, you know, the neighborhood that I now have the honor of serving, one of the kind of main commercial intersections in the community lost, you know, I don't know, seven, eight, nine buildings, right in the little section, and I had the, you know, harrowing experience after, like all of us, watching what happened to Mr. Floyd right in my neighborhood, right up the street from me, then also watching this incredible destruction unfold in front of us. You know, I think it's- it's really- I'm just so thankful that- that more people didn't die. That was the main thing that I was worried about, as I watched, you know, commercial buildings, a lot of them had little apartments on top of them go up in flames. And have never had a panic attack, but I'm pretty sure that I had my first panic attack watching all buildings or, you know, around four sides of the Midtown Global Market, which was empty for fifteen years and through a really great partnership between a lot of different entities, a public-private partnership, if you will. You know, turned into something that's really amazing, where- where there are a ton of businesses and entrepreneurs are kind of able to make a go of it, and there's a bunch of housing there. And at that time, I wasn't able to get in touch with anyone who lived there, because, as it turns out, they were in the absence of police or fire. They were surrounding their building, keeping people out, making sure that it stayed safe, making sure that all the families in the apartments above the Global Market stayed safe. But, you know, those like twenty minutes of calling everyone I knew there and watching it on a live stream, kind of, it felt like the world was like falling in on them, you know, and and so, there's this lack of response from the state. The state not being like the state, but like the city, the fire department, the police department, the National Guard, the State Patrol, whoever was supposed to be there helping us, nobody was helping us. And then, over the next couple days, as the fires, thank goodness, did not continue, that was our biggest fear, because we had three days of escalation, of each day being more horrifying and apocalyptic and hellish than the last. And if it had continued on a fourth day, I'm not sure what it would have looked like. But, that was- it was bad enough as it was. And then, we had these images of, you know, and stories from dozens of reporters. There are all these videos of reporters screaming, "Press, press," as- and then being, you know, hit with projectiles, hit with tear gas. I spoke to people who were medics, who had been targeted, it felt like. There is a video of a person on their own porch, being hit with a projectile. And those people who I was calling, when everything around the Midtown Global Market was on fire, those people who I was calling, who had stepped up to protect their neighbors in the absence of any protection from anyone else, they had the authorities come through two nights in a row and they arrested and ticketed and detained people who were- who were there, because there was no one else there to protect them. They were wearing like bright yellow shirts that said "Security" on the back, which they somehow had come up with over the course of two days. And so, Article Nine, which establishes the Civil Unrest Investigatory Commission, is a way for us to conduct an inquiry into all of the parts, all of the failures that showed themselves in my community over the course of those few days. And, you know, to that end, it- it establishes a ten-person commission. The membership- members will be appointed by the Chief Justice of the Minnesota Supreme Court. They're gonna get going pretty quickly. They're to be established by July first and finish up their work by December of this year. They're tasked with, you know, interviewing people who were there, who were in a position to know what was going on, to conduct a review of the responses of police, fire, National Guard, State Patrol, reconstruct that timeline, conduct a review of use of force that night and- and over the course of the time when the joint operation was deployed. And to, you know, I sincerely hope that nothing like this ever happens again, anywhere. Certainly not in our state, but in, you know, it's- this commission would also be tasked with coming up with some recommendations on policy and practice changes moving forward, should we ever find ourselves in this situation again. They would have professional support from the Office of the Legislative Auditor. And that's the substance of the bill, Madam Speaker, or of the amendment, excuse me. Further discussion to the amendment? Representative Driskowski?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Gomez. I read your amendment. Representative Gomez, I like the amendment a lot. And if there's anything from this bill that succeeds through this session or the next, whenever it is, this is it. And this should actually be the bill, or at least the cornerstone of the bill. So, I just want to thank you. I think your amendment is right on target. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Douth?
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Thank you, Representative Gomez, for your words and, you know, I think we all watched what was happening, but none of us can relate to it as if it was happening in our own backyard, in our own neighborhood, in our own district, and I- I've had a little note on my desk to thank you and Representatives Noor, Hassan, and Davany for hosting us on that tour. It was- it was sobering. I mean, it was- it was worse than I thought it was gonna be, and I knew that it was gonna be bad. And- and so, I'm sorry for the pain that your community is going through. It was fun to- to get to know you and to see your passion for your community. Fun probably isn't a good word to use in this scenario, but it really was. And, you know, the best thing that we can do in this legislature is connect in a personal way on issues that we're each passionate about, and I could see your passion for your community when we were on that tour. So, thank you very much for- for that. And, you know, I think- I think we all have concerns about what happened and how it happened and- and what should- what's the appropriate response from us. I think we all don't know exactly yet what the insurance company's gonna cover, what the, you know, what the loss of jobs were and what that impact is on personal economies and on businesses and, you know, so I think there's a lot more that we need to know. I do support your- your amendment. I think this is wise and- and I also want you to know that we're interested in- in trying to help you figure out how we get some help to your community. I'm not totally sure yet on the bill, but I'll be listening to the debate and- and hopefully we can get to something where we can help folks out, but I think this is an important thing to add in to the bill, so I would ask members to support it as well.
Any further discussion on the 811 amendment? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 132, as amended.
I'm sorry. Let me just make sure. Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I have a list. Since I am newly arriving here, I want to let people know who's on the list. Herr, Dean, Davny, Lee, Mahoney, Gomez, Noor. Can't read that. Vogel, Robbins, Albright. That's the list. Alright. So, we'll start with Representative Herr. Thank you, Madam Chair and members, for giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about our bill. Representative Lee and I have worked- we worked on the piece that creates the long piece- long-term piece of investment in this particular plan, and it is to establish the Metropolitan Area Redevelopment Corporation. And what this particular corporation does is it really centers those who live in these communities and who are from these communities to be able to be a part of redevelopment and reimagining. That for far too long, we have created systems in which those individuals who are the most impacted, who know their communities the best, are left out of what it means to invest within their own communities. That we have a lot of wonderful partners who we generally know well in our very large institutions, who get all the funding, and sometimes they work with or ask our community partners to volunteer to support them. And what we want to do with this particular redevelopment corporation is to give that power back to the community, in that they are the ones who know best what community needs are and how to grow their community in order for it to be successful. And the reason why this is really important to us is because we- we know that for far too long, this country, we've created laws and policies that have prevented people of color, especially black people, from owning wealth and generating wealth. We know this from the beginning of our country, of the land that was taken away from our indigenous and native communities and given to white settlers. We know that this happened after Reconstruction, when African-Americans were to be given land and assets, and those were then taken away. We know that because we've seen what has happened with generating assets and wealth. We know that we've seen that happen with the GI Bill, when African-American veterans were discriminated against from having- being able to access the GI Bill. We know that this has been the case many, many times within our history, and some of our laws were finally eliminated in just in in the mid-sixties and fifties and sixties. That was not that long ago. And so, when we think about who has participated in the redevelopment and who gets to own assets and who we get to invest in, we know that it has not been African-American community and communities of color. And so, it is truly important for us to remember that this is not just thinking about how do we reimagine what these communities, who are such vital parts of our community, will look like and who will be a part of that. It's about addressing the systemic racism that has led us to a place in which African-Americans have the largest wealth gap and income gap, that we have the largest gap in the state of Minnesota. And so, we- it is our obligation to look at how we not just imagine this for the future, but what we need to do to dismantle structures, in which that we then create institutions, organizations, that put them at the center of the work that we are doing. And I want to just say one last word about this, because when I ran the numbers on this particular program and what it would mean and how we would fund it, it was very clear to me that it was very doable. That what we're asking for means that those in the seven metro county areas would- would pay one cent extra on a cup of eight-dollar coffee. It means that for someone like me, who on my American Express bill, which I pay off every month, I don't carry a balance, but in the spending that I have in sixty thousand dollars a year, it's only a hundred and twenty-five dollars for me to pay to dismantle racism. So, I ask that we all remember how important it is for us to participate in the rebuilding, and to participate in the dismantling, and participate in the ways in which we invest in our communities, in which we give the power back to those who are impacted, and that we let them be the ones who make decisions about how to reinvest and reimagine their communities. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Member from Hennepin, Representative Dean?
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. The provision that I have in this bill is Article Number Five, which is rebuilding insurance provisions. It speaks to the Department of Commerce working with local businesses and local building owners to help facilitate the process by which they file their claims and by which those insurers ultimately execute those claims. And I think it's important to know that, you know, this is a- this is a population of a lot of people that probably don't have their attorneys working on these issues relative to their insurance, so Department of Commerce assisting them and helping them navigate that process is going to be really critical. I'd like to speak a little bit about the overall bill. You know, the unrest that- that happened shortly after George Floyd's death, I think shocked a lot of people. And in the end, when we see the damage, I'd like to equate this in somewhat to a natural disaster. And people are like, "Well, hold it. It was caused by people." But it's- it's similar in that no one really asked for a natural disaster, whether that's flooding, whether that's, you know, you know, a wildfire, whether that's, you know, a tornado coming through, all those types of disasters that, you know, we as a state come to the aid of those communities. And I can- I can say, you know, with good faith, that the people that live in these communities weren't the ones that caused the disaster. Just like the people that, you know, lived up in Duluth when they had the major flooding. They didn't cause that disaster. And- and that's why I import- And that's why it's important for us as a state to treat this disaster in the same way and be responsive. Because ultimately, we want these communities to be, you know, to be vibrant again. You know, when you look at what's happened along Lake Street for the last 20 some odd years, it has become a corridor of commerce for many of our new immigrant communities, as well as the people that have lived there for many, many years. And that's an example of what we need to maintain. And I really appreciate the provisions that are in here to try to protect land speculation and gentrification of these corridors. You know, Representative Lee and I share sections of West Broadway. And I'll be the first to admit that the impact on West Broadway was not to the extent of the impact on Lake Street in Minneapolis. And, but at the same time, the proportion of the damage will have a significant impact. And that impact of the events still are on top of the event of the tornado that came through nine years ago in North Minneapolis because not all the buildings, not all the building owners had rebuilt it. And if you go down West Broadway in Minneapolis, you can actually see vestiges of buildings that never quite made it back from the riots in 1967. So we need, as a state, to support entrepreneurs, Black business owners, indigenous owners, people of color, some of the nonprofits that were hit. We need to step up for them in the way that we've stepped up for so many different parts of the state of Minnesota. And I just hope that all of you will consider these issues when you vote on House File 132. So please, vote green. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and members, these have been difficult days for my community. Of course, I also have to recognize that for too many of community members of color, for far too long, the days have been difficult. It is hard, and it is good that we are now looking at their experience with more open eyes. Happy Juneteenth. Since Memorial Day, there has been a lot to be astounded about in Minnesota. The murder of George Floyd by members of the Minneapolis Police unleashed an unpredictable series of events. But one thing was predictable and was there in force. Minnesotans looked at what happened and asked, how could they help? They asked, what do you need? They came first by the dozens and then by the hundreds, with brooms and work gloves, to clean up glass off the sidewalks and streets, sometimes literally cleaning up in front of buildings that were still on fire. Then they opened their pantries and their wallets to make sure that their fellow Minnesotans had food to eat, the hygiene products they need, and diapers for the baby. Food security for too many of my community and too many Minnesotans was already strained by the pandemic and the closure of schools where many children get meals during the day. Now my area was essentially a food desert and will be for months remaining, with all of the major full-service grocery stores for miles destroyed. The first weekend, the good people of the Sheridan story, working with parents from a middle school in my district, set up a food donation and distribution event. They expected a few hundred bags of food to be donated and distributed. Instead, the line of cars to donate strung back six blocks. The Sheridan story folks stayed on, and instead of a few hundred bags, over 20,000 bags of food were donated that day. I know that a number of members of this body on both sides of the aisle have been personally involved in meeting the needs of neighbors in the impacted communities. And for that, I want to say thank you. And to all of my fellow Minnesotans who've stepped forward to support our communities, let me express my gratitude. See, Minnesotans know when neighbors are in need and how to help each other. It's what we do when we're at our best, whether it's pushing someone out of a snowbank or stepping up when there's been a disaster. But charity and volunteerism alone is not a sustainable model over time. That's why this bill is essential to Minnesota today. The areas most damaged in the recent civil unrest are the commercial and cultural corridors of our major cities. Speaking from my area of Lake Street, the Lake Street of 75 years ago is the Minnesota that we all inherited. The Lake Street of today, diverse and dynamic, is the Minnesota of tomorrow. Rebuilding of these corridors of commerce and culture benefits all of Minnesota through business development and jobs. Minnesota struggles with huge racial gaps in wealth and homeownership and income. While we look, as we must, at issues of police response and police accountability, we also have to look at those deeper issues. Rebuilding and reinvigorating intentionally can contribute to closing those racial gaps. The needs are immediate. They're medium term and they're long term. The rebuilding will only be successful if it is driven by the community, focused on returning existing businesses and creating new opportunities for more. It's going to take money, and it's going to take time. We need Minnesota to not look away at either the issues of race and disparities or the need for ongoing support and assistance. But we know, just like cleaning up after a blizzard, Minnesota knows how to step up. We know how to step forward. We know how to help our neighbors. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Representative Vogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I've listened to this in ways and means, so I've become somewhat familiar with it. And I respect and applaud the efforts that are being made because I understand the nature of the issue. The concern that I have is the structure in back of it. And the reason I say that is because what we are doing is creating a metro-wide sales tax that will then allow the money to be borrowed against that sales tax and then the use of eminent domain to allow the local governments to purchase people's property. And I've always struggled with the use of eminent domain because it takes the personal property rights away from the landowners. So my concern with this is not the intent of what it is doing, but the structure in which it being used to do it. Because if indeed we're going to tax people, put it into a pool and then allow a government or a redevelopment authority to go in and purchase personal property from people under the eminent domain laws, which doesn't really allow them to have a voice other than possibly in the price that they're getting, and then to resell that property to somebody else, my concern is that we're going to usurp the rights of a lot of those people that live in the area and have built their businesses in the area. So I have concerns with the mechanism that is being used in this bill, not necessarily the intent and not the desire of the people to recover from the incidents, but rather the method that we're using, as well as the precedent that we may be setting. Because the use of eminent domain, from my perspective, is a very, very strong tool that needs to be respected. So thank you, Madam Speaker and members, for listening to my concerns. And again, I applaud the efforts of the people trying to put something together. I just hope that maybe there's a way to do it without the methodology that's being used with creating a tax, borrowing money, and then using that money to purchase people's personal property with eminent domain. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Lee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to all members and Minnesotans who have visited my district and the districts of my fellow Minneapolis and St. Paul delegation members. Thank you all for responding to my neighbor's call for food supplies and financial contributions. My neighbors are uncertain about the future, about whether we are going to return to the way it was before, where it is possible for this tragedy to happen, or are we going to listen once more and respond to their calls for community-centered and community-led transformation? Today, we are not just looking at how we will rebuild the affected areas and reimagine it. We are addressing the long and historical exclusion of Black, Brown, and Indigenous people from owning assets, generating wealth, and passing it down so that these communities can have generational wealth. This bill specifically, Article 4, creates a long-term framework for equitable growth and establishes the Metropolitan Area Redevelopment Corporation, which will provide long-term redevelopment and transformation plan built through an equity lens. This long-term plan creates a system where people in community, from community, build and prosper in that community. Members, in passing this bill, we will finally be addressing the root causes of generational poverty, structural racism inherent in how we build and develop, and finally, close the wealth gap here in Minnesota. Members, I urge your support. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this bill, and I greatly appreciate Representative Gomez and Davney and Representative Noor and Representative Herr and Lee and everyone who invited us to your districts. Those tours were very impactful on myself and all the members who went. And we do really care deeply about your districts. And to Representative Gomez, you know, I'm very sorry how abandoned everyone felt. And I felt that when I was visiting with the business owners and the neighborhood members. And we really do share the grief of what has transpired. Members, I echo Representative Vogel's concerns about the structure of what we're doing. I think what we're trying to do is really important. And when I heard these bills in two different committees, very on short notice this week, honestly, the scope is breathtaking. And I get the problem is breathtaking. So I understand that. But I do think taking the time to do it well is really important. And so I have concerns on multiple sections of the bills. I won't go through it all, even though I have a lot of notes here. I think Representative Vogel covered eminent domain very well. So I think I'll just speak to the rent control piece. My remarks in committee talked about some of the other pieces. So the rent control piece is really important, members, to think carefully about. As you may know, I'm an economist, and there are other members of the body who are also economists. And when I was hearing this in committee, you know, I was having all these memories go off from my graduate school days. And so I went back and I looked at a couple textbooks and I did a quick Google search or two. And what's fascinating to me is that economists rarely agree on anything, especially of different political persuasions, but they agree across the board that rent control is a really bad idea because it limits supply and it really hurts the community. And so in the spirit of hoping that you'll reconsider this portion, I found a really interesting article by Paul Krugman, who is a Nobel laureate economist, who's, you know, a very strong Democrat, who really cares about social justice issues. And he wrote this June 7th of this year. And I'm happy to share it with you later. But I just want to quote it really quickly. Economists who have ventured into the alleged real world often quote Alan Blinder's Murphy's Law of Economic Policy. Quote, "Economists have the least influence on policy where they know the most and are most agreed. And they have the most influence on policy where they know the least and disagree most vehemently." This is true. And then he goes on to talk about the analysis of rent control. And he says, "The analysis of rent control is among the best-understood issues in all of economics and among economists. It is one of the least controversial. In 1992, a poll of American Economic Association found 93% of its members agree that a ceiling on rents reduces quality and quantity of housing." And the literature is rife with examples of this. So I just caution us, please don't use rent control. There are other vehicles that are out there, other financing mechanisms. There's a vast literature on this, but rent control will hurt the neighbors and the community in ways that will have long-term consequences. And other cities who have used these policies are trying to get out of them. So I'd be happy to continue to work on this issue with you over the next few weeks, and I have some other ideas. And finally, I just want to close with this little quote. He says, "So now you know why economists are useless. When they actually do understand something, people don't want to hear about it." And I just want to encourage you to please listen to Paul Krugman and rethink the rent control piece. Thank you, members.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mahoney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This House File 132 has a community repair panel. House File 132 has grants and loans for businesses. House File 132 has a sales tax, property tax aid. It establishes a Metro Area Redevelopment Corporation, assistance on insurance claims from the Department of Commerce, limits rent increases for tenants. And it's not, by the way, rent control for the whole city of Minneapolis. It's stabilizing South Minneapolis in a few blocks on either side of Lake Street and University Avenue and Broadway. And authorizes eminent domain by cities for community rebuilding. Again, I voted to get rid of eminent domain many years ago. But this is a speech that I agree with because it's limited to a number, a small number, of commercial corridors that have been rebuilt. These corridors, I'm old enough to understand and know, these corridors These corridors, I'm old enough to understand and know, these corridors were abandoned. They were the start of white flight to the suburbs. And we have spent years damaging these commercial corridors. And along come people that don't look like me, and they rebuilt these corridors. They put their heart, their soul, and their money on the line. And we should not allow it to be stolen by people with a lot of cash in their pocket. I like to call them dirt merchants. A lot of other people call them developers. And I don't mean dirt merchants to be derogatory, but they buy property cheap, hold on to it, and then sell it for a lot more money, kind of like I'm hoping I get to do with my house. These seven bills, seven items that I spoke to, I like to think of it as an economic development infrastructure that we are doing for these areas. We have put people... I better think of how I say this. We have spent, since I was a young, young man, and I watched the major cities of our country burn over a number of issues on a number of special days that will live in infamy in my memory. The biggest one being Martin Luther King's death, when they burnt cities from coast to coast. And America was so shocked, we abandoned those parts of those cities. And we decided, 400 years ago, I guess, to make a second-class citizen. And we held on to that. And when we burnt the cities, when the cities were burned, we got even more frustrated and angry, us white people. We have failed that group of U.S. citizens, men and women who have fought our wars, that have built our industries, that have paid taxes in my lifetime. We've abandoned them, and we've forced them into second-class citizenship. I said this the other night when Representative Robbins and my committee was together. I was not a perfect angel as a kid. I was not. I spoke a little earlier today about being a Golden Glove kid. I was no good at any other sport, but I got into the Golden Gloves, and I used it where I could. I'll just leave it at that. And whenever I got stopped by the police, I got kicked in the butt, I got grabbed by the scuff of my neck, a couple other things, and told to go home. But if the color of my skin had been different, that probably wouldn't have happened. So I'm going to support this bill, and I'm going to ask everybody to support this bill as much as possible. I will say a few things about Article 2, which is $167 million to help all the areas that were affected by civil unrest. It's not meant for the Targets and the Cub Food Stores, although who knows what's going to happen in the end of the day? Somebody may figure out how to get to that. But that's not the intent. We all saw on the news the barber, who is a stalwart of his community on Broadway, a stalwart, a place where young men can come and kind of learn from those that have come before them. It's meant for that man to get his barber shop back up and running so those young men can come in and feel like that's a safe haven for them to talk about what's going on. It's meant for the Ethiopian restaurant that I used to go to before it burnt, to get that person back up and running. And I wish we had had more time to put this bill together, this Article 2. Because Representative Robbins, I was really a little fearful of that you were going to take me to the cleaners over here about asking in-depth economic development questions. I'm so glad you did not. Because typically, we involve the departments. And we didn't get that much of a chance to do that with this bill. So this bill grants a lot of power to the departments to make good decisions. And we hire good people in the state of Minnesota, so I trust that they'll make good decisions. There's over 100 organizations that fit into this community development wording in here. Now, I don't think the department is going to hand $2 or $3 million to a nonprofit that's only had a $50,000 budget. But somebody like Mida, who has a great track record of being able to go out and connect in the community with people that don't look like me, and they will put together those packages that help those men and women get back into business. And we will have tax revenue coming from these commercial corridors again, hopefully sooner rather than later. And the idea of the city going out in this bill, there's $5 million for cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul to keep from re-gentrifying important corners, important areas of those streets, that the people who rebuilt it still feel comfortable there. Not... I mean, there's nothing wrong with Hennepin and Lake, but it's been pretty gentrified from when I was a kid going over there and trying to have fun at the Calhoun Beach. So, members, Article 2 is an economic development infusion. House File 132 is an economic development infusion. And let's hope it works, because I don't want to look like Detroit, any place in our metro area. I don't want to look like Detroit. Because if we fail at rebuilding these three major corridors and the others that were hurt, we will have parts of our city that look like Detroit for 40 or 50 years. And that's unacceptable in Minnesota. So, members, I hope you vote green for this particular bill.
The member from Scott, Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If Representative Lee would yield for a few questions?
He will yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Lee, I understand that you were helpful in putting Article 4 together. And so my background is in business finance. And please understand that the questions that I will pose to you are not meant to demean the meaning or in any way derogatory towards the events that shaped your community. But I do feel it's incumbent upon the body to ask the questions from a due diligence perspective with regard to the finances that we would undertake in helping to redevelop your community. And so as I look at Article 4, subdivision 5, you talk about the seven-county metro area, and I understand that it is further subdivided by the statutory or home rule charter cities in terms of for the taxable authority that you're executing and authorizing by this article. But could you tell me any estimate in terms of what the annual retail sales or use tax that is generated by that area is?
Representative Lee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Representative Albright, thank you for the question. Representative Herr was actually leading on that piece of the provision, and she will be able to provide that.
Representative Albright.
Madam Speaker, would Representative Herr yield?
She will yield, Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, a follow-on then to that question, if you could just... If you have any estimate in terms of what revenue is generated by the identification of that metropolitan area?
Representative Herr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Representative Albright, yes, the revenue that will be generated from this is just under $60 million.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that type of taxing authority, Representative Herr, do you have any idea in terms of what debt service that could pay for in terms of a bond offering?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative... Can you just speak a little bit louder? I'm having a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm still getting used to our new microphones. $60 million, and you're creating that as a taxable means to provide debt service to a bond offering that would be issued under the provisions in this bill. Do you have any idea in terms of an anticipated bond offering that would be offset by that $60 million?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, and Representative Albright, I just want to make a quick correction, that this is not all going to be used for issuing bonds. It's actually going to... The structure is set up so that bonds can be an option, but the majority of the funds will actually be grants that will be a competitive process in which community organizations can apply for.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the representative would continue to yield?
She will continue to yield, yes.
Representative Herr, and I listened to your comments with regard to, for sake of argument, I'm going to call it the MARK, Metropolitan Area Regional Development Corporation, the MARK. Under subdivision 2, you are establishing it with the executive council, first identifying the nine members to the council. But and please understand, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on any intentions here. But in line 13.23, you make note that each appointee must be a person of color or an Indigenous person. Does that reflect the demographics of that area entirely?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, so I guess I want to make sure I understand, you're asking me if that area has people of color and Indigenous people in that area?
Representative Albright.
Actually, thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, no, I'm asking if there are people of Caucasian, white, or others that would not be identified by line 13.23. Unfortunately, I can see someone suggesting the reverse discrimination by that line. I'm just doing due diligence, and so I appreciate your legal background. I'm just trying to understand if you feel that that has any conflict coming up in your way regarding in terms of inclusivity of people that would live in that area and want to develop a business and continue the cultural and ethnic background that was devastated in the last several weeks.
Representative Herr, are you asking her to continue to yield?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, I do appreciate your question, and I know that having been in committee with you, I think you always try to engage in an authentic way to understand. So I appreciate your questions. I would just like to direct you to the purpose for why we are setting up this particular... Setting up the MARK. And in our... And let me just find it for you quick, because I haven't seen this particular version of it. But we talk about why this MARK needs to be established. And we actually did seek counsel, and so I do not have a legal background, I have a finance background. So I had to seek input from our Department of Human Rights, and they did tell me that this actually is appropriate language to use because of the purpose that we have stated as to why we established the MARK to begin with. And so though it may seem like it, I want to remind us that in many institutions and corporations and nonprofits, that the majority, the vast majority of them, are led by people who are white. And this, we never look at that and say, hey, everybody, you're discriminating against people of color, right? We never think of it in that way. And so now we set up an institution that is specifically addressing the fact that we rarely have people of color who are very qualified put into positions of power in which they get to make decisions for themselves, that then now we are questioning reverse discrimination. I guess I would challenge us to say, when we see organizations, institutions that are all white, do we ever ask ourselves if they are discriminating?
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if Representative Herr would continue to yield?
Yes, I will.
She will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you. On page 17, section 5 of Article 4, we talk about the tax authority of this provision, and it's for 1/8 of 1% on retail sales and uses. Two questions. The first is, can that tax rate be modified? And if so, what authority by which would it be modified?
Representative Herr.
I guess, Madam Speaker, Representative... I guess I'm not quite sure your question. Are you asking who can modify it, or can we still work on it to change that amount? Or I'm not quite sure your question. So if you can maybe clarify and help me understand what you're trying to ask me.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Herr, you've established an initial rate of 1/8 of 1%. First, is that the only rate that would be applicable? Would it ever change? And by whose authority would it change? So if you found that you wanted to add another eighth and go up to 1/4%, who would have the authority to change it?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker and Representative Albright, I would suspect that it would change in the same process that any time we want to change taxes, that it would have to follow the same process that when a tax is written into statute, how do we adjust that when we want to? And so since you've been here much longer than me, I'm certain that you would know that in order to change something in statute, we very likely would have to bring it upon this body again.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm fairly familiar with the Met Council and the manner in which that was organized back in the 1960s. And I see similarities in terms of the creation of a similar public entity, a publicly-owned corporation in that regard. And that leads me to my next question with regard to... There are an incredible number of similarities between the provisions that are establishing the MARK and those that were initially established for good intentions to, you know, establish the Met Council. But it seems to me as if there are some cross-current responsibilities between the Met Council and this MARK. Could you talk to those? And I would like to understand in terms of, it seems like they're going after the same objective. So why would you not lay more emphasis and urge the Met Council to take up some of these directives as opposed to creating a new public corporation?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, thank you for the question. Actually, that was something I looked into enormously before we made the decisions that we did. Met Council is a regional policymaking body and essential services type of infrastructure. What we are creating here is economic development infrastructure. And though, yes, it may seem like for somebody who is looking from the outside that it is the same, I want to be very clear that the structure of the MARK is fundamentally very different, that what we're choosing to do is give people in those communities who know their community, who are impacted by the community, the power and the authority to make decisions of what redevelopment and reimagining looks like to them. That's why we have a member board that is primarily consisted of people of color and people with certain expertise. That is why we specifically stated that how the grants, who would get the access to the grants. We specifically stated that we would work with communities of color, those communities that are actually already in these particular areas. It's very, very different. And I think that for people who have not lived within these areas, you may not understand that very often, and this is not to disparage the Met Council, they have a huge task in front of them. And it is already very clear that Met Council has much to overcome when looking at disparities and how to do their work through an equity lens. We know that there are no transit that actually take people into communities of color on the east side of St. Paul. We know that where I live, where it's very affluent and educated, I have a bus route every other block from me. We know that when we think about who needs to have investments in them, that we do not always look at an equity lens to do that. That is why we created the MARK, so that they then can look through their work with an equity lens. We know that the current structures right now do not work, because if they did, we would not have the disparities that we have. We would not have the disparities on who gets to own buildings and who gets to run businesses, so that when they're done, and you know as a business owner, Representative Albright, that when you are a business owner, you get to build that asset so that when you retire one day and you sell that, you have wealth that you have generated. Our communities are renters within these buildings. People come into our communities, and they own buildings, and they build buildings. We do not get to own the assets ourselves. So a couple that I spoke with at Sunrise Market said to me, we're going to have to close our doors. And I asked them about what they had... And I asked them about what they had invested in that business, and they said, this is it. And when we close our doors, we have nothing. For 25 years of work, they have nothing to show for that. And so, it may look very similar to you, but as we've worked with community organizations, as we've worked with community organizations led by people of color who have been doing this work for a really long time, they said to us, this is fundamentally different. And so maybe I would ask those who think that it is similar to maybe take a look at their language again, to see how intentional some of those words were.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Representative Herr continue to yield?
She will. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, on line 13, or excuse me, page 13, we talk about the members that would be eligible in the community to serve on this board. And I read with particular interest that you cite interest and knowledge and needs of the area, experience in public health, economic development, urban redevelopment, nonprofit finance, or community empowerment. And this is not to, you know, suggest it's forgotten, but would by the nature of your definition here, would that exclude existing business owners in the community that this would be pertinent to? Would it exclude business owners from serving on that council?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, if they do not, if they are not a person of color, they do not meet these criterias, they do not have these expertise, yes, it would exclude them. But it doesn't mean that they can't participate with the organizations that have received funding, that they do not, that they can participate with the members who are making decisions, that they have equal ability to put their input into it. They just don't get to be the sole decision maker like they have been for generations.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If Representative Herr would continue to yield?
She will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, at the conclusion of this article, I do not find a sunset provision that would be applicable to the taxing authority under this section. Is that an omission, or is that intentional?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, can you just repeat that? I'm really thirsty, I'm dry from answering questions, I'm just going to take a drink while you ask me again.
Madam Speaker, I'll take a break. I'll take a break and we'll share a little drink together.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, Representative Albright. Representative Albright, you still have the floor. Continue on.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, my question to you is, in the effective date and preceding that, in most issues of a taxable nature, we talk about a sunset provision on the taxable authority given to a council or a commission of some nature. I don't see it in the body of this article. Was that an omission, or was that an intention for future purposes? And if so, could you articulate those?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, that is actually an excellent question. We did have a sunset provision in there, but there was amendment by our GOP colleague in committee in which we moved that, and so that is gone.
Representative Albright.
Madam Speaker, I was distracted, and so I unfortunately did not hear the entirety of her response. If she could repeat that, I apologize.
Just remind the members to speak in your microphones and pay attention when you're questioning. Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, my apologies. Is this loud enough? Okay, thank you. Representative Albright, we did have a sunset provision in this. Actually, originally, this MARK was only to exist for 10 years, the first five years to be the funds to go towards direct redevelopment of the impacted areas of the unrest, and then the last five years that the seven county metro areas could, would be able to use the funds for other projects, but, and one of the committees in, I can't remember which committee it was, I think it was Taxes Committee, one of, in jobs, in jobs, we did accept an amendment by, and I don't have the name in front of me here, I'm so sorry, but it was, it was a GOP colleague who put through an amendment to actually eliminate that provision of it, and so we accepted it.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so Representative Herr, by what you just said, my understanding would be that there was a sunset provision in the article, but it was taken out. If she would yield with a yes or no?
Representative Herr.
Yes, and it was taken out at the request of a GOP amendment.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We talk a little bit about the metropolitan area that you are describing in this, and I'm just wondering, I serve Scott County, and I know that a number of the members in my party, as well as yours, have served in Dakota, Scott, myself, Hanipin, Ramsey, Washington. Can you describe the consultations that were afforded the leadership in those counties, whether they be mayors or county commissioners, that would have oversight over those areas? What was their response when you brought to them the issue of a new tax on their residents for sales use and retail sales?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, the leaders that I spoke to were the people who lived in the community. The leaders that I spoke to were the ones who had businesses destroyed. The leaders that I spoke to were the ones who built those areas when nobody else wanted to live there anymore. When I used to visit 30 years ago, when I didn't actually live here yet, there are bars in the window and no one out in the streets after 7:00 PM. I consulted with those leaders, and the sense of urgency and the time that we are in right now, those leaders told me what they needed, and that's what I base this on.
Madam Speaker.
Representative Albright.
If Representative Herr would continue to yield?
She will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So Representative Herr, I appreciate your comments. Not trying to say you're dodging the question. I appreciate that you said you talked with folks living in the area and how they were affected by it. So am I to take from your answer that no, no, or in a very abbreviated way, more of an announcement that county commissioners in those affected areas or their mayors were not consulted on the new tax rate?
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, I already listed who the leaders that I did speak to, and my, there were people who actually did come to me afterwards who represented those areas and had discussions with me, and this is what, I'll tell you what I told them, that so many disparities exist already, that the people who live within all the seven county metro areas, right? We all benefit from the disparities that exist, that black women make 60 cents on the dollar that white men make, Latino women make 54 cents to what white men make, that those individuals, whatever taxes they may be paying, they have already made a huge share of that in their income and the disparities that women of color face towards that. I have already had, and I said the same things to my friends and my colleagues and those within those counties who came to me, and I asked them, and I said, we have already created systems in which Hanipin and St. Paul have carried the burden around housing and sheltering those who are homeless, that we have already carried the burden of affordable housing, because people in other counties don't want to build affordable housing, so they create, they create structures in which then they actually shift the burden of affordable housing to Hanipin and Ramsey. And so when those individuals tell me it is not fair that I'm asking them to pay a cent on an $8 cup of coffee, I tell them it's about time we all start carrying our fair share of the burden of the disparities that exist between all of us and all of us who have benefited from it. So if somebody can't pay a cent for a cup of coffee, and they're telling me that this is a burden on their taxpayers, then let's sit down and calculate the burden that has been paid by people of color, then we can compare notes, and then decide maybe who needs to step it up just a little bit.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm looking at page 16, Representative Herr, and if she would continue to yield?
She will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, on line 16.10, I note that the MARK would undertake, plan, and implement both commercial and economic development projects, which is customary for this type of a program. But in, on line 16.12, I'm just looking for your elaboration or definition in terms of what would be considered an incompatible development.
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, so we actually wrote the provisions in here in a way that actually allows the members, the nine panel members, to make their different, their own decisions on this, that had been too prescriptive, and this was a very actually deliberate thought on our part, that being too prescriptive as people who actually are removed from community, though I may look like my community, I actually am very removed from that, and I am not the right person to be making decisions on what would be in scope and what would not, how a word would be defined and how it would not. That when I spoke with the community organizations who actually already do this work, they do development work, they support black and brown businesses, they are the ones that said, we know what this means, and we would like the opportunity to define that, because for far too long, legislators and lawmakers who have no concept of what we need keep defining words and terms and how to do things for us, we would like for you not to do that. So I honored those leaders' wishes.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Representative Herr continue to yield?
She will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Herr, on lines 16.13 and 16.14, we're talking about the establishment of incubators for small businesses, ownership, which I applaud, I think that's a great undertaking. But what I'm curious about is that in that same line, it says, ownership of the land and buildings in which the businesses and institutions grow. And while there is a place and time for public ownership of those incubators and whatnot, would it be the intention of the MARK to own property for the long term? Because from my perspective, that would necessarily have a reduction on the taxable base that you're using to generate the use tax on there. So just wondering if you could elaborate for me in terms of your understanding about how that would reverberate through some of the other provisions in this article.
Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, Representative Albright, so I just want to clarify, the MARK itself will not own any of the properties. I think you mentioned that they, you know, if they own property, they actually will not. This provision is actually providing the grant outlines for the community organizations, institutions, businesses, it's actually for them. So the MARK itself will not own any property in any way.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have appreciated my questions with Representative Herr, thank you. I want to move on to just a few questions in Article five, if the author of Article five could be identified?
Representative Albright, I see some colleagues looking. Representative Albright, Representative Dean, I believe, would be the person you're looking to have yield. Representative Dean, will you yield for a question? Not hearing Representative Dean present. Oh, there he is, Representative Dean, he will yield. Representative Albright.
Please repeat the question.
Representative Dean, I have not asked the question yet, but thank you for yielding. Representative Dean, under section one, under insurance claims, identify that the Commissioner of Commerce must provide assistance to the public in order to ensure the timely resolution of property casualty and liability claims. Are you anticipating that there is going to be difficulty in processing and/or completing claims in the affected area by the private insurance industry?
Representative Herr. I'm sorry, I apologize. We went on a while there. Representative Dean.
I'm not assuming anything, and that's why this provision is in the, in the bill.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Dean, if he would yield?
Representative Dean will continue to yield. Representative Albright.
Representative Dean, if your concern is negligible for not having resolution to those claims, then why have we elaborated in such great detail on page 19 about the amount of information that must be provided by insurance companies to the MARK?
Representative Dean.
Representative Albright, I think first off, I would say that I didn't say nothing was negligible. I'm not making any assumptions about how insurance companies will perform with those individuals that can file claims. I'm not so sure that this is tied directly to the information relative to the MARK. I know that many of these businesses will have claims that may cover some of their losses, but could not, may not possibly cover all of their losses. So I think that that would be the only connection to the MARK, and actually, I don't think it would be the connection to the MARK, I think it would be connection to other portions within this, within House File 132.
Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Dean, my concern is that definitions matter, and the private industry is, is in the business of providing insurance as well as following up on the claims that are made. And I, while I know that the various policies that have been issued have different verbiage, I certainly hope that the state is not going to intervene in a private contract and try to force its way into those. I'll leave it at that. Members, Representative Gomez and I shared a Saturday a couple weeks ago in her community. It goes without saying, Representative Gomez, that my heart goes out to you and your community. And we shared some thoughts along the way, as well as afterwards, in terms of ideas that are applicable for redevelopment. It's difficult for me to, to go into detail on this, but I think we must, because we have to get this right. And we can't afford to get it wrong, because the collateral consequences for you, community, as well as for the state are great. While I support the desire on your heart to put this into motion, I think there's great work that still needs to be done. Please understand when I tell you I cannot support this today, but I look forward to helping you, working with you in any way, shape, or form that I can. We shared emails and phone numbers, and you all, you know where you can find me. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Quam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and this bill, it's very evident, it contains a lot of, you know, from the authors, a great deal of passion for your constituents and great intent, intent to address the second tragedy that hit Representative Gomez's district and several others. And it includes a broader, instead of just addressing the point, it's addressing a broader long-term process. You know, frankly, the second tragedy was the destruction of hopes, dreams, and livelihoods when parts of the neighborhood and community were looted and burned. And it is appropriate that we look at trying to address that and then fix the future activity. But in haste, we need to be careful to avoid unintended consequences. And I fear that with an unelected board and the expansion of eminent domain, there's the openness to deprive local businesses that have taken, in some cases, decades and brought a dream forward and had that business, and it was destroyed. But with putting power into a not-elected board, expanding the eminent domain, we open up the possibility to where, again, their dreams and freedom to choose could be taken away. And in our haste, I, I think we are not quite doing due justice in the long term for this. We need to do a better job. One of the things that has bothered me for years is that LGA has a fair-sized component for old housing. And that's saying, hey, if you've got older neighborhoods, older infrastructure, older houses, you need to do houses, you need to do additional effort and use more funds to take care of that. Now, it's housing projects, it's urban renewal, but it's what's needed to maintain vitality. It was discussed earlier, we don't want to become another Detroit. And if anyone's seen the vast portions of that former great city that lie desolate and in ruins, we can't let that happen. But we need to have a more thoughtful review of the long-term plan and implementation that's put forth here. And frankly, I applaud the passion that has gone into this bill. I just think that we need to not put together a long-term entity without stronger deliberations and work on what could be unintended consequences. And that's where my concerns, and it's been illuminated by several people, the different portions where we probably need more work on this. So, again, I applaud you, but I think there are flaws that could be fatal to this passing. Thank you.
The member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Representative Hurd, I would like to just clarify the discussion that you had previously with Representative Albright and his question about the sunset dates for the Metropolitan Area Redevelopment Corporation. It is not correct, members, not correct, that it was a GOP-offered amendment. In fact, it was Representative Mahoney in the jobs committee that offered the amendment to remove the sunset. And so, I just wanted to clarify that. For you members, simple mistake. But I just want to reiterate, I wasn't going to speak, but I wanted to make that clarification. But just reiterate that leadership in the seven-county metro area, counties were not consulted or advised about the sales and use tax imposed upon their constituencies, and neither were many members of the legislature representing those areas. And so, I will be opposed to this bill for a lot of that reason. But perhaps Representative Hurd, if she would yield for a question?
She will yield for a question. Representative Koznick.
Representative Hurd, on line 15.8, it makes reference to the Met Council and state agencies. What was the response or the position of the Met Council in regards to this portion of this bill?
Representative Hurd.
Madam Speaker, Representative, so then, line 15.8, that is a suggestion. It is not that they are to partner with the Metropolitan Council. It says they could be them or any state agency upon request of the executive director. And so, it was merely a suggestion. It's not saying that they need to partner with them.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Which state agencies would be required?
Representative Koznick, are you representing Hurd to yield?
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. Yes, I'll ask the question, then ask Representative Hurd to yield. Is there any limitations, Representative Hurd, on the state agencies that would be required to cooperate, provide staff, use of facilities, technical administrative assistance?
Representative Hurd.
Madam Speaker and Representative, we're not being prescriptive on who they would partner with and where they would be. The MARK language only establishes one employee, and that is the executive director. And so, whoever that entity and the nine members choose, that is where the individual will be housed.
Representative Koznick.
Well, Madam Speaker, thank you, and Representative Hurd. I think I have a different interpretation of this that says upon the request of the executive director, so that is a request. But it says further that they shall provide staff, technical, and administrative assistance in use of facilities, and the council and state agencies must provide for the assistance with existing resources. And my point of it is that we are putting this proposal together quite rapidly. There were suggestions offered in a variety of the committee stops, and I appreciate your urgency to put these packages together. However, I don't believe that this bill, it has a lot of open questions to it, and it wasn't put together with a lot of input from other members. This is going nowhere across the hallway that I'm aware of. I don't think that there's a bill introduction in the Senate. And while I appreciate the intentions, many of the things in here could be worked out, but I have problems or major concerns when we're raising taxes on the whole counties that aren't being appraised, asked for comment or input during the committee hearings. There was no opportunity for additional input as the rules were being changed, the 24-hour rules were being waived, and the Met Council was not asked to opine on these provisions and what resources they currently have. As Representative Albright had mentioned a little bit, there's some similarities and things that could deutilize the help, provide some relief and redevelopment with this. And so, members, you know, specifically this portion of the bill, but I think you could go through the whole bill, and there's things that we could do better. There were suggestions that were made, Representative Hurd, in the committee in regards to formula distribution of how these funds would be distributed among the counties for usage to make it fair between the seven counties. If you're going to tax somebody in Anoka County, maybe they should have some guaranteed returns on that investment. Or if somebody in Scott County or Carver County, as their taxes are being utilized for this corporation, what is the process for dissolution if those counties wanted to no longer participate? If Representative Hurd would yield to that question?
She will yield. Representative Hurd.
Madam Speaker and Representative, that was a really long question, so I'm going to try to answer it the way I remember it. I just want to first address the fair question. It is interesting to me that we continually use the word "fair," and yet we live in a society which it is not fair for people of color. We know that when people of color actually go in to apply for loans, they are denied at a much higher rate, even though they have the same credit score as their white counterpart. We know that when they are approved for a loan, that they are approved for a much higher interest rate. We also already know that individuals from black and brown communities are more prone to predatory lending because we know that they do not have the foundation for being able to advocate for themselves. We know that we have created structures in which people could potentially own homes in certain areas, but they cannot because of the structures and systems we've put into place. We know so many things about how our system is completely inequitable for black and brown people, yet we keep using the word "fair," which blows my mind. I'm going to also address just a bit of the question around asking other agencies to take on this work, the enormous amount of work it is. Every single day, we make laws in this building. Every single day, we direct departments to execute on the work that we direct them to. We do that every single day. And yet, when it is to execute funding that will go directly to communities of color for the reimagining of what their community can look like that is done by them and led by them, we are now concerned about asking departments who were established, entities that were established to actually execute work, that it may be too much work for them. I'm really tired of hearing us talk about winners and losers without actually talking about it. And when I hear somebody say, "Well, this is just going to go across the hallway and die there," it tells me that we are saying that we really don't have the will to work on issues that impact black and brown people. And that when it is about investment in black and brown people, we just automatically assume it's going to die across the hallway, and that has been happening for a really long time. I hope this doesn't die across the hallway. This is not symbolic for me. It was not to show, putting this together was not to show people. Look, we're trying. I did this knowing that I believed that we should invest in these communities, and I did this knowing that we all need to invest, and that I hope that it won't go across the hall and die there.
Representative Koznick.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I had the mute button to...
Representative Koznick, you have the floor.
Thank you. Members and Representative Hurd, thanks for the response. The point of my question is more to a legislative process. I recognize over my short six years that I've been here, a few things more significantly than I did my first or second year here. We can introduce a lot of bills, but having a collaborative process, and this is the reason of my question, Representative Hurd, so, and it wasn't meant to offend, but the legislative process needs a collaborative input if you want to make it across the finish line. A collaborative process, including stakeholders, provides the strongest legislation, the best ideas, minimization of unintended consequences. And so, I think you took it a little out of context. My point was, and the point in committee, was that we offered some suggestions that would make the bill stronger, more workable, and help you achieve the intent of the bill, without getting input from seven major counties in the state, from people that live all across the metro area, and from, yes, people down the hall that we also need to work with, ensures that your intent is met. Members, there hasn't been a collaborative process, at least in this portion of the bill and many others. And so, unfortunately, it's not ready and could be better well-thought-out. So, members, I'll be voting no, but I certainly have objections to raising the sales tax in the metro area without having a lot of input. And certainly, I also offered, as members might want to know, a $300 million amendment that the DFL voted down, and it was to use existing funds rather than the first option is to raise taxes, which is what you're doing here. So, it's too bad that we didn't have an opportunity to further discuss the use of current revenues to help out these areas. And that should be our first look for resources rather than taxing the people of Minnesota. Thank you.
The member from right, Representative Lucero.
You, Madam Speaker. Just wanted to touch on at least two items here from committee, and I'm wondering if Representative Gomez would be willing to yield.
She is willing to yield. Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Gomez. We had a great conversation in committee, and I appreciated your remarks. As I mentioned in committee, I appreciate your remarks, I appreciate your passion, and I appreciate the efforts that you have been putting in, obviously, for your community. One of the conversations that we had was in regards to the eminent domain, which I believe was your piece, if I recall, your piece of the bill. And at the time, the question I asked in committee, which there wasn't an answer for then, I'm hoping that there's an answer now, is in the use of the eminent domain, evaluation has to be determined by the government entity in order to calculate what is supposed to be an equitable value to the private party, the private owner of the building or land. And the question is, has it been determined since committee if the value is going to be determined pre-riot and destruction, or is it going to be post-destruction when the building is now in burnt or maybe doesn't exist at all condition?
Representative Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Lucero. I am positive that I have an answer in my email somewhere, and I cannot remember who sent it to me, but I did inquire about that with research, as I recall. And I'll find that here. There's been a couple of things going on. My understanding, though, I'm consulting with one of my colleagues here, who says that the valuation would be likely a negotiation between the city and the property owner to come to a mutually agreeable valuation, in the case that eminent domain was exercised under this narrow provision. And they can go to court if they dispute the valuation established by the city.
Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Gomez. So, I have had conversations in the past. I operate in the real estate industry, and I've had conversations with people in the past who have had their property taken from them by government through eminent domain. And yes, going to court is always a remedy, but in my experience with every person I've talked, spoken to that has unfortunately gone through this process, the government has a vested interest in lowballing the value, lowballing the offer. And because the language, at least that I've seen here, that I've read in the most current engrossment that we have before us, I don't see it's very prescriptive in determining the value. And so, I'm very concerned that these private property owners who have suffered such tragedy and maybe had an undervalued in terms of insurance coverage, or maybe had no insurance at all in the ability to rebuild, are going to be subject to the victimhood of having government come in, give them a lowball offer on a burnt building or a pile of ruins, rather than the value that it was prior to the... And I do not trust government, and I think that's what they would do, is give them the destructive, the value that's post-destruction. Then, yes, is going to court a remedy? Sure it is, but it's certainly costly. And I don't think that we want to place that, the people, as we've been hearing all afternoon here and in committee, the unfortunate victims of this tragedy of having their life in these buildings burnt to the ground, to put the burden on them to go to court to come up with the funds, I just don't think is reasonable, and I think it is an incredible risk. So, to allow eminent domain to be used in this manner, I think creates an incredible danger for private property owners to be abused by government for lowball offers, and then to be left in the position where they don't have the finances or resources to be able to go to court and take on the government that has, very deep and seemingly endless. Another provision that we discussed in committee was the rent control, and I know Representative Scott did speak a little bit about it. In committee, I asked a few questions in regards to the calculation of the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, and the answer in committee was that it would be calculated over the entire seven-county metro area to determine what the rate of inflation is. And so, the entire seven-county metro area with all that happens in the commercial or residential market in that very large area is going to be averaged together to have inflation calculated and then applied to this very narrow, specific area. to have inflation calculated, and then applied to this very narrow, specific area, a couple blocks in Minneapolis and St. Paul and surrounding areas. And the question I asked in committee, which there was no answer given, was if such a rate of inflation over a very large area will not take into account the costs of a very narrow area? An example I cited in committee was a school referendum. A school referendum, which obviously impacts a much smaller area, is just one example of increasing the costs. That would not be applicable necessarily, or be given sufficient weight in a calculation of inflation in a much larger area. And so what would happen, members, is that with the CPI calculated over a seven county metro area, and then applied to residential and commercial property owners in a very narrow area, very likely, they will not, and by the way, the provision, the rent control is in effect for four years, it's through April 1st of 2024, they would likely be in a position where costs on a local level would increase faster than the rates of inflation. Yet, the law, if this were to be passed into law, would prevent the private property owners from being able to rent out their property to be able to potentially even break even. And when I asked the question in committee, the answer that I received was something to the effect of, well, it was just a nonsensical answer, actually. It was just devoid of reality of economics, that if you, if there's a certain cost, and if you're not able to at least break even, there is an incentive by the private property owners to simply not rent out their property. And then that creates exact opposite of what's intended to be applied here. But then it goes even further regarding this rent control. It's actually quite alarming. When I'm reading on lines 19, beginning on line 19.21, and who is going to have this rent control applied to them, I'll just start near the end of line 19.21 where it reads, it'll be the recipients of entity grants or loans through the Civil unrest immediate relief program, right? Okay, that makes sense. If you're going to be a recipient of a loan, you would be in scope then apparently. It goes on. Or a person eligible for an award determined by the emergency assistance community repair panel in affected areas. So you don't have to merely be a recipient of the grant or loan. According to the language, if you are merely eligible for an award, but you choose not to take it, you are still going to have government rent control thrust upon you. So you could be in the scope of area of, under executive order 20.64, not be the recipient of a grant or loan program that would be established in this bill, but you might qualify for the award, but even though you don't take the award or any government money that's provided, you're still going to be subject to rent control. What is the logic for that? Members, it is very concerning to have big government come in, potentially confiscate the property, the private property of private citizens, by offering them lowball offers, knowing that these, the pain and the chaos that's been inflicted on this community are going to likely have little at their fingertips in order to fight big government, fight for what rightfully belongs to them in court, and then to further have rent control put on them. Members, this is very concerning, and it is something that we should, I would encourage a no vote on this language. There are opportunities to improve this language, and we need to have greater foresight into the unintended consequences of the language before us. And members, I'll just end with one more thing. I've heard numerous members now speaking on this bill, starting with the opening comments and others, and it's very alarming. It's very disconcerting to me. And the tens of thousands in this state that are, and I don't even like using this term, I hate the term, but I've heard it repeatedly used in committee and on the House floor yesterday and today, because I think it's derogatory. I think it's derogatory to refer to somebody as black skin and brown skin. I really hate using those terms. But as we've heard several times now, that we live in a world, I think the opening comment was, we live in a world where people with black and brown skins don't matter. That is not true, members. That is absolutely not true. I believe my life matters. I believe my wife believes her life matters, and she's this, and, you know, we being among this category of the quote-unquote brown skins. And I really don't appreciate being put into a collective. Each of us are unique individuals. We're not a homogeneous collective. We have individual minds, individual lives. We have individual liberty that's been given to us by our Creator. And our country absolutely has done things wrong in the past. But incredible effort has been accomplished in this country, and we have been a beacon for the world, in recognition that it doesn't matter what your background is, that you can succeed. You can chase your dreams, you can live your life and pursue happiness as you see fit. And I, this truth continues to be borne out each and every day in this great country. I look at some of the great people, this is just a handful of people that have succeeded, that I look up to, that are minorities, Larry Elder, Dr. Thomas Sowell, Dr. Walter Williams, Dr. Ben Carson, Dr. Condoleezza Rice, Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas, and it goes on and on and on, of those who have succeeded in this country. Each and every one of us faces barriers and challenges, no matter what our background is, no matter what our socioeconomic position that we're born into, that we don't control. But one of the greatest barriers to success in life is a mindset of victimhood. When one lives their life thinking of themselves as a victim, that creates a mental prison for themselves. And that's why we are warned with the truth by Jesus Christ Himself. Do not harbor bitterness. If we harbor bitterness towards others, we will only damage ourselves. And so like so many have done in this great country, they've overcome the injustices, they've overcome barriers. And as I've said, this country has absolutely had dark days in the past. But there is no greater country that has worked so hard through the decades to overcome those, and we have. And there is no other country in the world today where a person can go after their dreams and achieve happiness for themselves, and to rise up no matter what socioeconomic background they were born into. Are there racists in our society today? Yes, there are racists. But institutional racism, systemic racism, structural racism does not exist as a sanctioned and endorsed manner. It is illegal. Racism, to act upon racism, to be profiling others, is illegal, and it's against policy. And when it happens, law needs to hold such people who act upon racism accountable. But that is far different than the false claims that I've repeatedly heard, that our institutions are permitting racism, that they are systemically racist. There may be individual racists, but we need to stomp them out. And when I toured some of these businesses that were impacted by the riots in the last couple of weeks, my heart went out to these minority business owners who had from nothing were able to start a business, grow their business, and be very successful, because that is what our country allows, is for people to come to this country, or to be born in this country, and to start a business. And that's exactly what I saw. And if systemic racism was sanctioned and endorsed, these businesses would not have been able to start. But they did start, and they thrived. But these minority businesses were ransacked and torn apart by the riots. And as I spoke with these business owners and I listened to their stories, they didn't understand why. They didn't understand why they themselves, as minority business owners, were targeted. Why did they have their businesses burned down? I don't under, I mean, that doesn't make any sense. And they're left in tears. And then when I have this bill language in front of us, now these business owners who are left in shambles are going to be potentially subject to having their business confiscated, their private property confiscated at a diminished value, and then given to other private party owners. It's not going to be eminent domain for government use, it's going to be eminent domain at a diminished value, and then given to different private parties. That is wrong. That is an abuse of government. And one more thing that often doesn't go said, very often, but is very much the truth, is I've heard it repeated multiple times by some of those who have, those minorities who have succeeded in this country, and I've heard it from their own lips, when they speak about inequities. It is a fact, members, that one of the largest correlations between generational welfare and poverty is government dependence. Government dependence is one of the largest factors that hinders a person from pursuing their dreams. We need to allow people to get out from underneath the thumb of government, whether they are trapped in failing school districts. No child should be permitted to be trapped in a failing school district. And when I hear about these claims of systemic racism in Minneapolis, I think that's the first couple pages here of the bill. In fact, it's on line 2.2, "Structural Systems of Inequity and Racism Within the City." The city of Minneapolis has been controlled by Democrats for decades. The Attorney General's office has been controlled by Democrats for five decades. The governor's office presently has a Democrat, and had eight years of a Democrat before that. So the city of Minneapolis has been controlled through and through for decades by Democrats. The chief of police is a minority. So if systemic racism exists in Minneapolis, it's because of Democrat failed policies. And creating more government control and more government programs is not going to eliminate government dependence, which is one of the largest variables for creating inequitable Members, we need to empower citizens. We need to allow people to recognize that they have the power within themselves to exercise the individual liberty that has been afforded to each and every one of us, made in the image of our Creator, and then bestowed with these unalienable rights. And again, the list is incredibly long, who've been able to get out from government dependence, and to pursue their dreams and succeed in our great country. And I gave you just a handful of names, but there are tens of thousands and millions of more people that have done so and continue to do so. And members, my heart, again, goes out to the city of Minneapolis, city of St. Paul, all of those impacted. I sincerely want to help them, and I did. I was among the many representatives who hosted campaigns to collect goods from my community, thousands of dollars worth, and then brought down to help those that have been the unfortunate victims of these tragic riots that have occurred. But I don't think that help is going to be best, as we've seen in this language before us. So members, unfortunately, I have to vote no to this bill, but I very much want to help in ways that are going to be more productive, ways that are truly going to empower people of Minneapolis, St. Paul, and all across the state with those unalienable rights, that they can exercise to achieve success in this life. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll keep my comments brief. A lot has been said today, and a lot has been said really well today, I think. You know, politics and the House and this place are places where people are transactional a lot, right? But I just know and can tell very clearly that, you know, Representative Albright, Representative Damuth, right, I'll never forget walking down that street with you between, on Chicago, between Lake and the Transit Center, and I kind of looked over at you, and just seeing you kind of take in the landscape of your girlhood and its current state, and just sort of feeling this connection to you. And, you know, Representative Koznick, who even though he just expressed a lot of concerns with this bill, was in our district over and over again, and connecting with businesses in our community, and helping other members to connect with those businesses. And I know that, you know, and Representative Drazkowski and Leader Dowd getting up and speaking in favor of my, you know, of the commission to figure out what actually happened. And that was an effort that Representative Nash, even though he's not able to be here with us today because he's attending a memorial service, was really critical in helping to get the parameters of, none of that work is, was, or none of those, the things that you all did and have done and have been doing, the supply drives, I know that that wasn't because you're like, oh, in the future I'll need you to do a supply drive if something awful happens in my community, right? That wasn't what that is. That was, none of these things are transactional. None of, I think, like, the real clear message that I've gotten from all of you today, for the most part, is, you know, that your hearts are with our community, and you want to help, and we want to figure out a way to do this together. And I just, I think that's really genuine. And so I just am approaching this in that same spirit, and that's what I want to say, is that, you know, like Rep. Daviney said, this is what we do. This is what we do when people in our state have experienced extreme tragedy in our state. suffering, is that we can put aside, like, the fact that we won't agree about a lot of policy stuff and step into our shared humanity and figure out how to come together to help people who are in need. And so I guess I just want to, again, you know, I just express my sincere gratitude to all of you. And, you know, I know there are some specific concerns with this package that we've brought together today. It, I think the parts that are challenging and are complicated are challenging and complicated because that reflects the nature of the situation that we're trying to fix. You know, a lot of my colleagues have spoken really well about sort of the circumstances that led us to this point of having this destruction rot in our communities. And, you know, we did this in a week, right? So, because of the deadline of special session, and I know that I and Representative Davney and Representative Hassan didn't get a lot of sleep for about two and a half weeks before we started working on this package. And so it's not perfect. It's something that we put together that reflected the requests and the pain that our communities are in. And, you know, again, I just take your, the words that I heard over and over today, which were, "We want to help. We're not sure this is exactly the right way that we want to help right now, but we want to help." And so I just thank you for coming into this conversation with that, and I'm committed to doing that work with you. And I look forward to figuring out how we can come together and do what we do when Minnesotans are suffering, which is to care for one another and to be there for one another. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, the Majority Leader, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Gomez, Representative Davney, Representative Herr, the three of you, not Herr, I'm sorry. I do want to thank you, but that's not what I meant right now. Representative Hassan, the three of you have really seen the center of destruction right in your neighborhoods, right in your communities. And I have not ever seen extraordinary public servants so dedicated to every aspect of their community's lives and livelihoods, basic public safety, day in, day out, in the midst of a complete storm of unrest, violence, arson, pain, injustice. And your exhaustion has not produced a subpar work product. Your exhaustion and your commitment to your communities have produced a work product that actually meets the needs of the people you represent in a way that you can do as state representatives uniquely. Representative Noor, I know we're going to hear from you next. Your district has been deeply touched by this as well. And we are very fortunate, in the Minnesota House of Representatives, to have leaders not only who so deeply care about your community, but who are so able and capable of translating pain and need into public policy responses that not only meet those needs, but also touch the hearts of people on all parts of the political spectrum. It is finally our humanity, our basic ability to reveal ourselves and our pain and reach across and see each other that creates the conditions in which we can create effective public policy. We, as a state, we, as Minnesotans, we, as a state government, we, as the entity and state government that creates all local governments, that delegates the power of the use of force to police departments, that delegates the power to make decisions about public safety to cities, to governors, to National Guard units, to the State Patrol, we collectively have failed the people in your districts. And that is why this bill takes the shape that it does. We know that in times of natural disaster, Representative Drazkowski, your first session, I remember, was floods in southeastern Minnesota in your district. The very first thing that you did was to come and ask for the assistance of the rest of the state to help your communities recover. That was the same year the 35W Bridge collapsed, and we had a unique situation with the bridge collapse in which the state had failed, the people who were paying the price financially, health, physical health damage, those people were going to be left hanging for the political and legal process to play out, and were going to pay the price twice because our system wasn't designed to serve them. We came up with the 35W Bridge Fund the same year we came up with significant aid to southeastern Minnesota because we knew we had to reach out and provide the resources to protect the people of the state. It is the first duty of government. Today, we heard some concerns about eminent domain, the sales tax, rent stabilization, and other provisions, which we think uniquely helped to serve the community hit by the unrest in Minneapolis and St. Paul. We can agree or disagree. But one of the things that I was really happy to hear in this debate was no mention of a budget deficit, no mention that we can't help because we don't have the resources. We know that when times are tough, we do have the resources in Minnesota to help each other, even with a pandemic, even with unemployment that is higher than we've seen during the Great Recession, even during civil unrest following the murder of one of our citizens. Even at the most extreme times, Minnesota has more than enough resources to reach out and help the people who have been hit hardest and have nowhere else to turn. When I went to Lake Street, first and foremost, but also West Broadway, the thing that people were saying there is, "The usual bureaucracy, the usual way the city does business, or state programs do business, or even the way local nonprofits do business, doesn't always reach everyone in the community. We want to stay where we are. We want to rebuild. We don't want to be forced out. We just want to have the opportunity to pick up and go back to our lives as best we can and continue to pursue our dreams and our hopes." They asked us for help. So we've crafted legislation that we believe meets the needs of that community in their hour of need. The fund that Representative Mahoney brought forward is a fund with grants and loans administered through deed through the affected cities that provides help for businesses right away. They need the money right away, and we have existing channels to help. The fund, which we call the Community Repair Fund, is built slightly differently. It's built on the premise that if we want to make people be seen and heard and have their experiences count for something and have their damages to be addressed, we need to see them individually and see what particularly happened to them. So some people, it might be a small business that doesn't, just is leasing, it doesn't have much inventory, but is able to keep the door open with a steady flow of customers. It might be a business, a family that owns the building, and instead it totally destroyed, and they need to rebuild from the ground up. It might be people who are insured or underinsured or not insured. It might be people with an extremely successful GoFundMe site and good insurance who don't need a lot of help. We need to make an individual inquiry into each individual circumstance and try to fashion a remedy that fits their needs best. That's the part that's modeled on the 35W Bridge Fund. And then we need to set up a structure for the communities themselves to be at the center of deciding how they want their community, their corridors, to grow into the future and to help provide resources to make that possible. We do that all the time today. We do that with the, on the Iron Range, through the IRRB. We have a community-based decision-making process where local resources are addressed to meet local needs. We created the DMZ, or, I'm sorry, not the DMZ, that's different. We created the Rochester Destination Medical Center, the DMC, and to allow Rochester to use resources from its community to meet unique local needs. What we're talking about with this fund is, with this structure, which has already acquired its own name, the mark, what we're doing is recognizing that the people most affected by this civil unrest, weakened already by COVID economically, and really sitting on generations of inequity and lack of investment, have unique sets of circumstances as well, and the resources of a broader community should be brought to bear to help them recover and grow stronger than ever before. So we're looking short term, medium term, and long term, and recognize that all the taxpayers of the state, all the citizens of the state, are coming together to put resources on the table to help these communities recover, because these people are victims of something they could not control and should have had protection from state and local government. I really want to applaud Representative Gomez, your amendment on the independent investigation into what happened. We know that there are a lot of factors, right? There is a, we have, first of all, a pandemic and a quarantine situation, which I think helped set the more immediate need, or not the immediate need, but helped kind of set the stage for a spark. We have a state with the worst inequities in the nation, and we have a history, particularly in Minneapolis, of police brutality. Combine those elements together, and it was pretty obvious pretty early that this was going to be a very difficult situation for the city of Minneapolis to manage. We had people coming from the outside. We had people spreading information and trying to distract people from the needs at hand. We had a response from the National Guard, State Patrol, and Minneapolis Police Department that, in many cases, exacerbated tensions. But we also saw many times when they cooled tensions and were the right people at the right time to help the city move along through this trauma. So we need to find out what happened, because we can't just give resources without having accountability. And the investigation component of this bill provides the accountability to look at what happened, what underlying conditions and what decisions went into making this situation grow completely out of control. We need to help. We need to understand, and then we need to resolve that we are going to not only work on the inequity of the people who suffered in these corridors, but the inequities of our state in the long run, and recognize that together, it isn't just about police accountability. It's not just about rebuilding Lake Street. It is about building a society built on equity and opportunity for everybody, regardless of where they come from, what they look like, or what their background is. This is an important step towards that, but the work that we are talking about today is a work of a generation, many generations. And it is the work of each of us looking inward and deciding what part we can play in making our society, our state, a place where everyone can be successful. I would ask for a yes vote.
To the author of the bill, the member from Hennepin, Representative Noor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On this day of Juneteenth, let's recognize the struggles. Let's recognize the resilience, the contributions, and the courage of African-Americans in our state and in our nation. Members, equity, inclusion, and fairness are no longer only moral imperatives, they are economic ones. Members, it's time to integrate everyone into the economic system that we have, especially people of color indigenous who are often left behind. Let's build an equitable economy that works for all, that grows good jobs, builds capacities, and removes barriers and expands opportunities. Over 1,500 businesses on Lake Street, on University Avenue, on Broadway, and the surrounding areas were impacted, were destroyed, were damaged. That's part of our state economy. It's a huge loss for our state. It is our duty to help build the lives and the livelihoods of those who have been impacted. One of them is Mama Sophia, who used her entire retirement account to open a restaurant. She was impacted by COVID-19. Fortunately, she didn't have the resources to continue to pay for her insurance. She lost everything, her whole life-saving. It's people like Mama Sophia who are calling us and saying, "What will you do to help me, to help my community rebuild? What will you do to support us in this hour of need that we have? What will you do to open the doors of opportunity?" That's a calling for all of us to take the right actions that are needed to support them, to stand with them, to understand them. Members, it's going to take a lot of resources. To me, it's not only this amount that we're asking. It may even cost billions of dollars of loss to those businesses. I know we're going to rebuild. I know we're going to restore even better than how our city in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and other places that have been impacted. Many people are depending on us. They're waiting on us. This package, this comprehensive package sends the right message, creates that opportunity, builds an equitable economic system that we can all rely on. Not all of us were born into this opportunity. Some of us were lucky enough to have something, but some of them never had anything. They built their lives. Many of the businesses impacted are black, brown, indigenous people who struggled to build that business. They've lost it. Remember one of them, Rahul Islam, from Jim Davney's district, who said, "If this will bring change, so be it. We can always build the businesses. We can always start from somewhere." The pain, the anger, the struggles of those individuals is what brought us here today. This is a small ask. This is something that we can do immediately to provide the resources needed to the people of Minnesota. In fact, some of the individuals who are calling me, they don't live in our district. They live across the state. They have got vested interest in bringing back the economy, revitalizing the corridors that have been impacted. It's our moral obligation to do the right thing. Members, let's rebuild, reinvest, and reimagine our communities by making sure that we stand with them. I ask for your support. Minnesotans are asking for your support. Our economy depends on it. And yes, we can do it. So I ask for your green vote on this bill. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to your support.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll.
Akim.
Akim, aye.
Akim, aye. Albright. Albright, no. Anderson.
Anderson, no.
Anderson, no. Becker.
Becker, no.
Becker, no. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, no.
Baker, no. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, no.
Bo, no. Brand.
Brand, votes aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, a.
Carlson, a, aye.
Carlson, a, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, no.
Daniels, no. Dowd. Doubt, excused. Davids.
Davids, no.
Davids, no. Davney.
Davney, no.
Davney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, no. Detmer.
Detmer, no.
Detmer, no. Draskowski. Draskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson. Erickson, no. Fabian. Fabian, no. Fisher.
Fisher, yes.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, no.
Franzen, no. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, no. Gomez. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, no.
Green, no. Gressel.
Gressel, no.
Gressel, no. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, no.
Grunhagen, no. Gunther.
Gunther, no.
Gunther, no. Haley.
Haley, no.
Haley, no. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, no.
Hamilton, no. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, no.
Heinrich, no. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, no.
Heinzmann, no. Herr. Herr, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, no.
Johnson, no. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, no.
Jurgens, no. Keel.
Keel, no.
Keel, no. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, no.
Koznick, no. Creshaw, excused. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, aye.
Kunish Poudine, aye. Layman.
Layman, no.
Layman, no. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Lithlegard. Lithlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, no. Mahoney.
Yeah.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash, excused. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N. Nelson N. New. New, no. Noor.
Noor, aye.
Nornis.
Nornis, no.
Nornis, no. Navatni.
Navatni, no.
Navatni, no. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, no.
O'Neal, no. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, no.
Petersburg, no. Pearson.
Pearson, no.
Pearson, no. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, no.
Poston, no. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, no.
Quam, no. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, no. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, no.
Schumacher, no. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott, excused. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, no.
Swazinski, no. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, no.
Tice, no. Torkelson.
Torkelson, no.
Torkelson, no. Vang.
Erdahl. Erdahl, no.
Erdahl, no. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, no.
Vogel, no. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, no.
West, no. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomat.
Wogomat, aye.
Wogomat, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, no. Yuakim.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman, excused. Nelson N.
Nelson N. Nelson N, no.
Nelson N, no. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, no.
O'Driscoll, no.
O'Driscoll, no.
There being 74 ayes and 53 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. The next bill on the calendar of the day is House File 33. The clerk will report the bill.
House File 33, number three on the calendar for the day, an act relating to education.
I recognize the author of the bill, Representative Yuakim.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, House File 33 contains the language in House File 163 that left the House floor on the last day of regular session. A pandemic cut our work from session short, that is why you see this slimmed-down version of an education policy bill before you. The pandemic has shown a harsh light on our opportunity gap and I feel has exacerbated it. Next year, we will have to have a laser focus on policies that will help our students who will be facing increased challenges and may have fallen even further behind. Once again, just to remind you how in House File 33, we provide some flexibility for students in our special education program, including House File 1940, Representative Hewitt, and House File 853, Representative Porcelson. Both of these provisions were left over from last session, though that passed off the House floor. Also from last year is Representative Hewitt's House File 575, that allows school nurses to dispose of unused medication at the end of the year. And we have Representative Edelson's House File 3852, which is a fix to the required dyslexia screening reports that passed in our bill last session. We also have Representative Moeller's provision from House File 4257, that will require Tier 1 and 2 teachers to receive mental health training similar to the current training our Tier 3 and 4 teachers receive. Also included is Representative Edelson's House File 3166, that provides our students vaping prevention instructions. And with Representative Sandell, House File 3179, we make a technical fix to school district transportation contracts. Another important provision makes sure that voters are notified about school referendum 45 days before elections, in Representative Freiberg's House File 3179, instead of the 30 days before that is in current law. Finally, there are a few early childhood provisions that we heard in the early, were heard in the Early Childhood Committee, and this time during Special Session on Education Policy Committee, and included in the bill, and Chair Pinto will describe those right now.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and thank you Chair Yuakim. Yes, Article 5 of House File 33 contains the work of the Early Childhood Finance and Policy Division in the early learning area this year. There are five sections in Article 5. There are three smaller provisions and then two that are somewhat bigger. There's a provision that allows for a greater variety of methods for verifying a child's age, a student's age, for purposes enrolling in school. This is required under federal law, and of course, we want to make sure that if a child is the appropriate age, that they are in school and learning. There's a provision that establishes a developmentally appropriate timeline for screening early scholarship recipients, right now, early learning scholarships, pardon me, right now, that screening happens at age 3, and we've got some kids who are younger receiving that scholarship, and we want to make sure that they are receiving developmentally appropriate time for screening. And then finally, there's a provision that adds tribal nations to inter-agency early intervention committees, which are charged with public outreach and identification of community resources. We want to make sure that our tribal nations are included in that work. And then finally, the two larger provisions and two quite exciting provisions, one is, it's really important that effective July 1st of 2020, right now, under current law, a number of our child care providers and early learning providers will lose the ability to access early learning scholarships because they have to attain a certain rating under the parent-aware system. The bill would delay that deadline by a number of years. It has the support of both those who are more supportive of the parent-aware system, those who have greater concerns with it. Either way, they're in agreement that that deadline should be delayed, and we should be sure that that funding does not disappear on July 1. And then finally, and for me, I think for many of us, perhaps the most exciting section in the whole bill is Section 2 of Article 5, championed by Representative Richardson, which will prohibit the suspension of preschool students and limit their expulsions and exclusions, and really addressing the disparity in the school discipline. I know that Representative Richardson will speak more about this on third reading, but I'm so grateful to her for her leadership, to the Solutions Not Suspensions Coalition for their work as well on this. And I should note that this provision has the support of a very wide base of stakeholders and really is consensus language that can make a difference for our children. And I want to thank Representative Franzen and the members of our committee and the staff as well for your work this session. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Erickson has an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Erickson moves to amend House File Number 33 as follows. The amendment is coded A1.
To the author of the amendment, Representative Erickson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and the A1 amendment is a provision that was included in 4415 that Representative Davney was kind enough to include, but was not accepted at final negotiations. So, in gratitude to Chair Yuakim, earlier today, we had fruitful negotiations to be able to add this amendment to the policy bill. There's no cost to it. It is a fund transfer, and the department was a bit surprised when they saw the results of 4415, defined that the fund transfer language in there did not include Ogilvy. So Ogilvy School District has worked diligently with MDE to try to get this included. And so I am grateful that Chair Yuakim and my team have agreed that this bill should go forward, House File 33, hopefully with this amendment in place, and we can send it to the Senate, where Senator Carla Nelson has agreed also to accept this, as has Senator Weaker. So, members, this is kind of an interesting process. I mean, I've been through it before, but not usually at the 11th hour when we have an urgency to move a policy bill and we can all get together and agree. So I'm really happy about that. And, Madam Chair, again, this is a fund transfer. It is something unusual, but I have included some very specific language in case the department does have some issues at the last minute. Ogilvy is close to statutory operating debt, and this will help them survive that, at least they hope so. They're a small school district in east-central Minnesota, so, Madam Chair, with that, I ask for support.
Representative Yuakim.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Erickson. I suggest a yes vote on this amendment.
Is there further discussion to the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
No.
The motion prevails and the amendment is adopted. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 33, as amended.
The member from Dakota, Representative Richardson.
Thank you. I'm speaking in support of the bill today and want to speak briefly in support of the preschool suspension ban. We know that Minnesota has an equity problem. We have seen some of the most significant disparities played out in the news and across the media in terms of education within the United States. We definitely have a lot of work to do. In Minnesota, we have the data. Indigenous students are 10 times more likely to be expelled or suspended than white students. Black students are eight times more likely to be expelled or suspended than white students. Also, students with disabilities are twice as likely to be expelled or suspended when compared with students without disabilities. And these disparities start very early, with the pushing of 3- and 4-year-olds out of preschool programs. The primary issue with the school dismissals have been the subjectivity of the dismissals. We know that 3- and 4-year-olds behave in very inconsistent ways, and they're not always going to be following the rules, but when kids break the rules, the consequences are not being applied in an objective way. So this bill is going to allow students to receive support and have the opportunity to be able to work with parents to identify where there are issues, rather than pushing kids out in ways that have been found to be harmful. We know three- and four-year-olds are at a very sensitive time with development, in terms of brain development, and being pushed out at three and four has significant impact on their long-term outcomes. Kids who experience suspensions or expulsion are more likely not to finish high school. When you push them out early, they get the feeling that they don't belong. So I'm very proud to support this bill today, and also thank Chair Yuakim and Representative Pinto as well for all their work along with the other stakeholders that helped to move this forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Weaker, Representative Erdal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank Chair Yuakim for the fine work that she did doing this bill. I think it's a good bill, a lot of good things in it. It's not perfect. Had more of my stuff in it, it might have been closer to perfect, but I have to give it a good mark at the moment. I have some reoccurring themes in education. One is making civics education more relevant in Minnesota. We'll talk more about that next year. Also, I focused in the past on the preparation and retention of teachers. I'm disappointed that my provisions on teacher mentoring did not make it into this bill. I do not hold Chair Yuakim responsible. Actually, she was trying to be helpful, as was Representative Pinto, in getting this into the bill, but things didn't work out, but I would like to make some comments on why it's needed. We lose two to three out of five teachers in their first five years of teaching. In Minnesota, I believe that we need a consistent mentoring program to support our new teachers. And the amendment that I had offered before came at the suggestion of the Minnesota School Board Association and other education groups. It forms a working group to, among other things, develop a model mentorship program from which our school districts could shape their programs. I think that it was a relatively simple thing to do, certainly a needed thing to do. Again, unfortunately, it's not going to happen this time, but I tend to be a little bit persistent in what I'm trying to do, and we'll see it again next year. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Brown, Representative Torkelson. The member from Ramsey, Representative Hurr.
Madam Speaker, I want to first thank Chair Yuakim for her leadership. It is because of her persistence that we have a bill at all. Let's be clear, though this bill has important provisions, it falls short of creating a safe and supportive environment for our students, teachers, and staff. This year in the Education Policy Committee, we had the great opportunity to hear from students of color and white ally peers about the environment in which they learn in, an environment that does not treat students the same, no matter how well-intentioned the adults in the school buildings are. These students wanted to go, these students wanted to understand what they were experiencing, so they didn't experiment. A group of friends got together and had two from their group, one white and one black, wear the same outfit to school to see what the response might be. The two wore tube top with no cover-up and jeans. To their surprise, it didn't take long before the black, after the black student arrived at school, that she was told her outfit violated school dress code. She needed to cover up or be sent home. The white student was never spoken to. When the students brought up the discrepancy, they were met with excuses. This is a microcosm of what kids of color experience every day in school. This type of bias is a big contributor to the achievement gap, an achievement gap that is fueled by disparities in suspension rates between white and minority students. Nationally, black students are suspended three times as often as their white peers. In Minnesota, it is eight times. In a 2018 study, the Minnesota Department of Human Rights notified forty-three school districts and charter schools that suspension rates for nonviolent offenses still suggested widespread discriminatory practices. I will not name the district of the school, but a federal investigators found not long ago that a black second-grade student was suspended for one day for poking another student with a pencil, while a white second grader who threw a rock, that hit a teacher and broke a teacher, that teacher's sunglasses, was not. The white student was allowed to work off the cost of the sunglasses by helping the teacher at lunch for several days. The issue of an inclusive school environment and suspension is urgent. This year, we tried to address this topic by clarifying the distinction between in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension, requiring reporting and documentation of withdrawal agreements, giving guidance and additional tools to teachers, requiring use of non-exclusionary discipline policies or practices before suspension, expulsion, or withdrawal agreements. But none of these items made it into the final bill. In addition to the lack of work to address the current issues that are before us, we did nothing to address the issues that our students face when they return to school. We all know the achievement or opportunity gap has only widened because of the current pandemic. We know that with the current anti-Asian sentiments, there will be increased incidence of bias. We know students who might not have had ACs now will because of the trauma from their families' experience during this unprecedented time. Yet we did nothing to address issues with distance learning, the digital divide, the resources needed to help teachers prepare for dealing with loss of knowledge, investing in the need for increased mental health support for both teachers and students, nothing. This is not from lack of trying from House DFLers. It is with great disappointment, it greatly disappoints me that our children's voices continue to be silenced and their experiences dismissed. I am ashamed that our children from the dominant culture have been better allies to our black and brown peers, to their black and brown peers, than we as adults have been. My only hope is that we as adults start to understand that even if we believe we don't see color, we are socialized to behave in the way that upholds the current structure that continues to marginalize children of color. My hope is that we take this to heart and decide that we will have the will to do something next year, because it's clear, we did nothing this year. When we, when we were last together, Representative Creshaw asked us to reimagine education. I hope that next year, our reimagining includes dismantling racism in our education system and continues to, that continues to perpetuate disparities, that we would fund efforts that will create an environment that is inclusive and welcoming with a lens that our black and brown students should be the focus, because we know some students already feel, do not feel included and welcomed. If we all agree with Representative Creshaw's comment that grassroots ideas is what needs to be lifted up, then that means we will all take the grassroots ideas students brought forward this year about fairness and bias, and we will actually do something with it. Thank you, Chair Yuakim, for doing your best under the current circumstances. For those who do not follow the Education Policy Committee, we did pass House File thirty-six, the Education Equity Bill, when we came back. Though none of those provisions made it into the final bill, we will continue this work. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me this time to speak to the bill.
The member from Brown, Representative Torkelson.
I want to thank, thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the Chair Yuakim for including my bill from last year that deals with sped paperwork, and I especially want to thank the staff and administration of the New Ulm Public Schools that did the hard work to put together proposals that actually make sense and do help reduce the paperwork for special education. It's a good example of how things can come organically from the local level and actually be signed into law if everybody hears about a good idea. Thanks again, Chair Yuakim, for including this bill in your legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The author, or the member from Alax, Representative Erickson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and education team members from the GOP caucus. I'm recommending a yes vote on this bill. This is essentially the same proposal that was one sixty-three, that was sent off this House floor at the last minute, the last night before we went signee-die. With that said, I also want to give thanks to especially those, you know, who work in the GOP arena, but also to Chair Yuakim's staff and also to Representative Dabney's staff, because actually in education, though we have some disagreements at the core, we're all about our children and ensuring that they get the best possible education we can provide as state lawmakers. So with that said, I want to especially thank our researcher, Jody Withers, who I know is, has also been a mentor to Alyssa Fritz, and I think that she has appreciated that, and we have appreciated her. There are, of course, House researchers. We have had Ms. Para on maternity leave, and so Ben Weeks has filled in, and I really appreciate what House research does for us over the years that I have served here. They have just done so much good. So again, members, I hope you can vote yes for this House File thirty-three as amended, and again, thank the Chair, Chair Yuakim, for indulging some really solid fruitful negotiations earlier today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
To the author of the bill, the member from Hennepin, Representative Yuakim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members. Like we said before you, it's a slimmed-down education policy bill that has some good provisions, and that's from a bipartisan group of our members. While it's not near what I had hoped for during the regular session or special session, is that we were able to negotiate with all the parties. I want to thank Representative Hurr for grounding us in the work that we still have to do for our students. And members, we have a lot of work to do. So next session, come with your best ideas and buckle up, because we are going to finally get something done. I also want to thank all of the members of the Education Policy Committee for your work that you put in, both during regular session and special session. I'd like to thank Representative Erickson for negotiating this bill with me, but especially I'd like to thank staff, both nonpartisan staff and partisan staff, for all the work you do. I'm sorry that we're having to go into overtime. We so appreciate you, and hopefully you'll get a chance to take a break soon. Members, with that, I would ask for your support of this bill.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll.
Acem.
I got it.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids.
I'm talking about.
Davids.
David, aye.
Davids, aye. Dabney. Dabney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins. Erickson. Erickson, aye. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, no.
Grunhagen, no. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Hurr. Hurr, aye. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard, excused. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Kegel.
Kegel, aye.
Kegel, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw, excused. Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard. Listegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney, excused. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
No. Miller, no.
Miller, no. Muller.
Muller, aye.
Muller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash, excused. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, no.
Quam, aye.
Quam, no.
Quam, no. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott, excused. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, no.
Swazinski, no. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Zhang J. Zhang J. Zhang.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman, excused. Draskowski. Draskowski, no. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye.
It's 117 ayes and nine nays. The bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. The next bill on the calendar for the day is House File 63. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 63, number five on the calendar for the day, an act relating to employment.
To the author of the bill, Representative Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This bill relates to the state of Minnesota's Shared Work Program. As a bit of background, the Shared Work Program is administered by our unemployment division, and the program allows employers to divide available hours of work among a group of employees instead of implementing a full layoff. Those employees may then receive partial unemployment benefits while working reduced hours. So, for instance, if an employer needed to cut 10% of its labor costs, instead of laying off 10% of its workers, it might cut the hours of all of its employees by 10%. And then the employees could get unemployment benefits to help ameliorate the lost revenue. The benefits of this program is it allows businesses to keep experienced and trained staff, avoid future hiring and training costs, increase operations quickly when business conditions improve, and avoid layoffs, which creates goodwill and financial stability for the workforce and the community. The employers manage the plan but submit it for approval to deed. Health and pension plans have to continue as before the start of the plan, and employees must be full-time or part-time. They can't be seasonal or temporary, and they have to have been with the employer for at least one year. This bill relates to the requirement that an employee work with the employer for one year before being eligible for the plan. The bill actually came to me from a constituent who was at a company in the Twin Cities that implemented shared work, and the constituent has only been with the company for eight months, and so he's unable to take advantage of the plan. That 12-month requirement is actually the most restrictive requirement in the country for shared work plans. No other state has a one-year requirement. Many states, including Arkansas, Kansas, Maine, Missouri, Nebraska, and Rhode Island, have no length of unemployment requirement at all. My bill takes a middle-road approach, temporarily reducing the length of employment requirement to three months, which is consistent with four other states, including Maryland, Michigan, Pennsylvania, and our neighbors in Wisconsin. I did this on a temporary basis with a sunset at the end of the calendar year 2020, because I wasn't sure how much it would cost when I wrote the bill, and I thought a sunset at the end of the year might mean that the cost could be covered by CARES Act money. But when the fiscal note came back, I had a very pleasant surprise. Federal legislation passed earlier this year has the federal government covering the entire cost of shared work plans for the duration of 2020. Accordingly, this bill has no fiscal cost to the state of Minnesota at all, $0. To be clear, we don't have to spend any general fund dollars, nor do we spend any of our CARES Act money to make this benefit eligible to more businesses in Minnesota and more Minnesotans. I'm not aware of any opposition to the bill. We had an informational hearing in the Jobs Committee before the special session, and I didn't receive any negative feedback. We had a great hearing in the Labor Committee on this bill, and on a roll-call vote, it passed out unanimously. I want to thank Senator Rarick, who's carrying this bill in the Senate, and I also want to thank Representative Vogel. I appreciate the advice and conversations I've had with him on this subject.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill. It's third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 63.
Third reading. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no. Aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, vote aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids.
David's, aye.
Davids, aye. Daveney. Daveney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Adelson.
Adelson, aye.
Adelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson. Ericsson, aye. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, vote yes.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr. Herr, aye. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard, excused. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw, excuse.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard. Listegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney, excused. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklin.
Mecklin, aye.
Mecklin, aye. Miller. Miller. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash, excuse. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston. Excused. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott. Scott, excuse. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman, excused. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye.
With 126 ayes and zero nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. The next bill on the calendar for the day is House File 108. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 108, number eight on the calendar for the day, an act relating to state government.
To the author of the bill, Representative Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. House File 108 is a deja vu, I guess, because it's the same as House File 4500 from the regular session. It just basically allows for the MMB to extend grants that have been granted to, for research grants at the U of M, grants that have been extended to nonprofits for projects that they're working on. And these have been interrupted by the COVID crisis, the shutdown of the school at the U of M, the shutdown of other things that are in the state. So what this is doing is allow MMB on an individualized basis, they can grant extension for the, extension on the grants for the grants that are needed. And, Madam Speaker, there's an amendment I have, the A1 amendment, and I'd like to put that on now.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Nelson M moves to amend House File Number Eight as follows. The amendment is coded A1.
I recognize the author of the amendment, Representative Nelson M.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, members, what the A1 amendment does is, when we passed this in the regular session, there was some concern from the LCCMR that their grants were not covered under the language that was in the original bill. MMB thought that they were. So, but between, when we introduced it for the special session, we tweaked the language to include the LCCMR into it. But House File 37, that was passed by Representative Hanson, included language to give, allow them to extend those grants to the LCCMR. So the language that we tweaked the bill with, we don't need anymore. In fact, it would be problematic if it was passed with that language. So that's what this bill, or this So that's what this bill or this amendment does, is it removes that language for the LCCMR and actually moves the bill back to the, exactly the way it was during regular session. So I hope everyone can vote, approve the amendment.
Discussion to the amendment. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The House Minority to State Government Finance has vetted this bill, and we urge support of the amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion to the amendment? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There is another amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Winkler moves to amend House File number 108 as amended as follows. The amendment is coded A20-0814.
To the author of the amendment, the Majority Leader, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this amendment also extends a deadline, this for the public employee. I can't remember what the R is. It stands for PERB, Relations Board, PERB, which sounds like offensive words in debate, but I don't think it actually is. And this has been done before. They basically don't have the resources to do their job, and so this extends the effective date.
Discussion. Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, and members, Republican members, I would ask you to put aside your animosity for the Majority Leader and support this amendment.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill. It's third reading.
Third reading, House File number 108, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion. Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House GOP members, I would urge support of the bill as is amended. Thank you.
Madam Speaker.
Further discussion to the bill. Representative Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, this is a good bill. It basically allows work that's been going on with the state to continue going on that was just delayed because of the COVID. And I appreciate your yes vote on the bill. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. We will give the clerk a moment. Members, remember as we're voting for, after many, many hours today, please state your name clearly and your vote clearly. And members, please silence any background noise so that the clerk can clearly hear your vote and we don't have to circle back to you. With that, the clerk will take the roll.
Akam.
Akam, aye.
Akam, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi. Bernardi. Biermann.
Biermann, aye.
Biermann, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafny. Dafny, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Adelson.
Adelson, aye.
Adelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson. Ericsson, aye. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen? Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley. Helverson. Helverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr. Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard, excused. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Witun.
Katisa Witun, aye.
Katisa Witun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard. Listegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney. Excused. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklin.
Mecklin, aye.
Mecklin, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Excused. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Polston. Excused. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam votes aye, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott. Excused. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Fang.
Fang, aye.
Fang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius. Wagenius. Wozlawick.
Wozlawick, aye.
Wozlawick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgemat.
Walgemat, aye.
Walgemat, aye. Zhang Jie.
Zhang Jie, aye.
Zhang Jie, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuwakim.
Yuwakim, aye.
Yuwakim, aye. Speaker Hortman, excused. Haley. Haley. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Wagenius. Wagenius. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye.
There being 126 ayes and 2 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. The next bill on the calendar for the day is House File 41. The clerk will report the bill.
House File number 41, number 10 on the calendar for the day, an act relating to human services, the second engrossment.
I recognize the author of the bill, Representative Pinto, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, House File 41 addresses the topic we actually talked about this morning. It has to do with increasing our childcare assistance rates, the rates that are paid to providers to meet a requirement of federal law and increase those rates that are severely lower than they should be. We do have, do have an amendment that I'll be offering to reflect the agreement as was discussed this morning. So if you can turn to the amendment, Madam Speaker.
We will move to amendments. There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Pinto moves to amend House File number 41, the second engrossment. The amendment is coded A8.
Representative Pinto, to your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, the amendment before you will put the bill into the same shape that it, to reflect the agreement as discussed this morning on the bill that we, that we discussed, the larger bill. What this does is that it increases our C cap rates to be the 25th percentile of the, of the most recent survey in 2018. To remind you, there's a survey that's taken every three years, and rates are set based on that, or they're supposed to be. The national standard is to be the 75th percentile. We right now are at the 25th percentile of the survey from nearly 10 years ago. What this will do is get us to the most recent survey, and it does so entirely with federal dollars that are specifically designated for this purpose or for childcare. There are no, if this amendment is adopted, there will be no general fund cost at all to, to the bill. This does reflect an agreement to, to get the bill through. Ask for your support.
Discussion to the amendment. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill. It's third reading.
Third reading, House File number 41, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion. The member from Douglas, Representative Franzen. All right, am I muted? We can hear you, Representative Franzen. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. First off, I just want to give a shout out to Representative Pinto for his work in negotiating with the Senate. You know, I was pretty firm in where I thought that I could get my caucus as far as supporting an increase in the childcare assistance program. Also realizing that our providers have stepped up during this time when they haven't felt like they have been supported before in the past from the legislature. I also want to thank the childcare providers for their work and for their continual advocacy of their small business, their independent business. And going forward, and then in the next session next year, I hope that we can continue doing some good work showing them support in order to loosen up some of the, the red tape that keeps them, the numbers down. As you know, childcare is, is very tricky business right now. The numbers for childcare providers all across the state are down. There is a shortage of spots for children to go to. And while the C cap program is not going to be a panacea, it certainly isn't going to make for people to want to go into the business. It certainly will help those that are needing a step out of poverty into a better situation. And so the childcare assistance program is a great program when it is used appropriately and when it is used, when the financial dollars are used appropriately, as, as we know. So I want to thank Representative Pinto again for his work and just for listening to us and valuing the opinions and the points that the minority has made during these last two years. Further discussion. Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Franzen, I want to thank her for her, for her hard work and her championing this issue as well. And, and I want to make sure that we're all just mindful that the importance of this topic of getting our children off to the very best start. We think about childcare as being kind of about parents working and then being able to get jobs and employers growing and communities growing. And of course, that's absolutely critical. That's especially critical right now. And as Representative Franzen said, our providers have stepped up during the pandemic to make sure nurses can go to work, that, that our grocery store workers can be on the job, that all sorts of people can be on the job as well. And of course, this is early development and learning. The first year, the first couple of years are the most critical time for learning in life. And meanwhile, we had a sector, we have had a sector even before the pandemic that was in crisis, and it's even worse now with nearly half of providers receiving public assistance themselves because of receiving so little pay. And yet, as anyone with small children knows, the rate that they are paying as parents is incredibly high as well. The economics do not work. They do not add up. I share Representative Franzen's interest in really driving towards this and continuing to address it in future sessions, in future years. For now, this is a really important step that we can take to support our hardworking providers and parents and making sure that their kids can get off to a great start as well. And I finally want to note that, that I know this is a priority of the administration, and in particular of the Lieutenant Governor, who's been a champion for, for this cause and for young kids and their families as well. So these are all good reasons for us to take this step and then certainly commit ourselves to continuing to work on behalf of young Minnesotans and their families in the future as well. And with that, be grateful for your support for the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Hearing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
I was hoping that Darian would be better.
Akam. Akam.
Akam, aye.
Akam, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Biermann.
Biermann, aye.
Biermann, aye. Boe.
Boe, aye.
Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Dafne. Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Adelson. Adelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson. Ericsson, aye. Fabian. Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan. Hassan. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr. Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard, excused. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Well.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Whittoon.
Katisa Whittoon, aye.
Katisa Whittoon, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard. Listegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney, excused. Mann. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani. Mariani.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, nay.
McDonald, no. Mecklen. Mecklen. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran. Moran. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash, excused. Nelson, M.
Nelson, M, aye.
Nelson, M, aye. Nelson, N.
Nelson, N, aye.
Nelson, N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Do you recognize that name?
Navatney.
Navatney, no.
Navatney, no. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston, excused. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott, excused. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, no.
Torkelson, no. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wozlawick.
Wozlawick, aye.
Wozlawick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgemat.
Walgemat, aye.
Walgemat, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Hassan. Hassan. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Mariani. Mariani, excused. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Moran. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Runbeck. Runbeck.
Runbeck changes, Runbeck changes from no to aye.
Runbeck changes from no to aye.
There being 119 ayes and 8 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I'm about to move a recess to the call of the chair. We will not set a time to come back, but we'll provide at least 30 minutes' notice to members to come back. So there's no set time, but we'll give 30 minutes' notice. And DFL members, we will caucus at 6:15. So, Madam Speaker, I move a recess to the call of the chair.
Representative Winkler moves a recess to the call of the chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The House stands in recess to the call of the chair.